Call to me in order. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the May 25th. Public budget session and closed session and June 6th, 22 regular meeting.
Move approval?
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Peter, come on up. I think you have a short presentation to make.
Not much to do there before this.
And make an introduction.
Real quick introduction and thank you. And a check presentation for you guys.
Alright.
Basically, I want to, as you know, after 18 years of being in downtown Almar, which I've loved, I've sold back in dashes. Now you're worried dash, want to introduce the new owners, Jason Brittany. And Nicole.
Welcome.
They're doing great. They've had it for three weeks and stuff and I wish them 18 years plus and I just want to really say thank you because I've been. I can't probably do this. Thank y'all for everything over 18 years. And I was thinking I've known y'all, it seems like forever. Martha, the two Martha Sue and Martha Yuz. I've seen y'all, first met y'all at five o'clock at the YMCA years ago.
That's right.
And I ran with you and you put signs out for me and Lee Allen when we ran our first marathon and I worked out with you the other day at five o'clock still getting up venting. Your brother was my neighbor through the trees and I think Renee did Cindy's hair forever. Then Chris, you were original member of the Ori Running Club. And Ronnie, Michael and Dexter, seeing you guys all the time at the chamber functions and all about and Shirley, loved having you on the health board. That's where I really got to know you. Came on, you asked really good questions that you would really care about the community. And Bill, you were one of the first people to wear the back end dash shirts going to the lights run and the Charleston Bridge Run and stuff. So I appreciate that. And I tell you what, downtown Almaral is been so welcoming from Vicki Coggins to the, at the ADDC, all the way to Joy. Every director has been just wonderful with your Parks and Rec. You have Toby, I think I opened right when Toby took over and now Lisa, you got just great staff. And I just think like downtown has changed. I mean, I'll be gone, you know, Gene Starnes has just left, Jimmy Brown, I remember back in the days with Jimmy Brown, God rest his soul. But now you have so many young people there now taking over. Jason and Nicole and then you have Livvy Bugs, you have Make It Personal. I mean, the list is too, too much for me to remember. There's so much going on with downtown and Mayor did a great job with bringing Pfeiffer downtown and the fruits of that labor is really showing right now. But anyway, I just want to say thank you to everybody. My last donation from back in dash is going to, come on up here Lisa, to the Almaral Parks and Recreation. We got thirteen hundred and sixty dollars, I think it might be some change.
If you will, turn around Peter so David can get a picture of you.
That's awesome.
You take the one that you could cash. I gotta give a shout out to Richie Herman, my good friend and landlord for all these years. And I tell you what, I don't imagine back in dash existing if I had done what a lot of people told me to and go out to the highway. And you guys are in for a wonderful ride because this is a welcoming town. And thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Peter.
You've added a lot to our city and we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
He's not going too far.
That's exactly right. Do you want to, you want to stand up and say anything?
I didn't, you know, listen, we moved up Almaral four years ago. We've been welcomed into the community. I'm a runner. I know quite a few of people here. And I just look to pass on the tradition that's here. He's been here for 18 years, he's a big student of the field. And you know, I'll be working with all of you, we continue to engage with the community and continue all the traditions that we're adding to it. So I appreciate the warm welcome. Thank you.
Moving into public hearings, ordinance 2226 to consider a zoning map amendment 2207 for rezoning of six parcels totaling four acres on Johnson Street and Highway 52 North from General Highway Business District to R10 and R10 to Heavy Industrial. Kevin, will you introduce?
Thank you, Mayor. This is tax parcels 14402, 28, 7505, 24949, 1455 and 24534. Together, those are collectively about four acres. These are located at or around 1708 US Highway 52 North. The applicant is MHK Properties owned by Eric Malden, Brandon King and Mahelms. Right now, these are zoned a mix of GHBD and R10, General Residential District. What they have requested is HID Heavy Industrial District so they can store their vehicles there onsite as part of their towing operation. Staff did find that there are, they exceed the number of junked inoperable or unlicensed vehicles there and had met the definition of a junkyard, which is not an allowed use in GHBD or R10. So the proposed use there would be for automobile junkyard to go in conjunction with the business that's there right now. This is surrounded to the north by GHBD and R10, to the east by GHBD and R10, to the south by GHBD and R10, and then as well to the west by GHBD and R10. The future land use map classifies these parcels as commercial and general residential areas and where they are located outside the regular floodplain and watershed district. You can see right here the different parcels. There's one, two, three, four, five and six. The parcel to the rear is located in R10, is along Johnson Street right there. Future land use map does have this as commercial and residential. There's an aerial to help you see a little bit better. This is the business right here and adjoining lot. There are some other parcels that are connected to this as well, including this back here. There's the view from 52 North. People remember this was, this was continued from the last meeting. We were trying to work out some options with the, with the owner there so that they could have a certain number of vehicles onsite there still. We haven't gotten any resolution with that yet, but I do believe that they wanted to go ahead with hearing tonight. So we're, that's where we are. Just to recap here, the applicant intends to rezone these lots to HID in order to have an automobile junkyard so vehicles can be stored onsite outside until state regulations are met and vehicles can be removed from the property. Automobile junkyard is defined by the ordinance as open storage of more than five dismantled, wrecked, inoperable or unlicensed motor vehicles on a single parcel of non-residential property. And however, open storage of no more than two vehicles should be allowed in residentially zoned parcel of property. So it's five and non-residential and two and residential. As I mentioned, the parcel to the back is currently zoned R10 and is classified as residential properties along 52. The other five of them are zoned GHBD and they are classified in the future land use map for commercial. Planning zoning board meeting, the board unanimously made a recommendation that council deny, CMA 22-07 with the inconsistency statement. Given the proposed use, the parcel's proposed use under the future land use plan and its proximity to general residential district, existing single family uses and no contiguous industrial zoning districts, there are no merits for the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the city's future land use plan. We've included the planned consistency statement, the inconsistency statement and the future land use map amendment statement. Questions?
Council, have any questions or staff?
I do have one question. What is the difference between, when I hear the word automobile junkyard, what comes to my mind is dilapidated cars sitting there for years rusting out, which we have quite a few of those around town, seems like. What's the difference between an automotive, automobile junkyard and a storage lot?
The storage lot allows for the removal and temporary storage vehicles, but does not include disposal, permanent disassembly, salvage or accessory storage of junk, wrecked or inoperable motor vehicles. So it's a temporary thing. I don't know, I wasn't, when this was written, I'm not sure. It's done as a special use permit in LID. I think we have one of them in the city that I can think of. And we have had to work with them and let them know, kind of monitor that, let them know that they're starting to collect more of the junk vehicles there too and that they need to keep those under.
But the request, the request we have before us now, the public hearing we're considering right now, is it so, and I may need to ask one of the business owners, is this more of a temporary thing? Is it a storage lot for towed vehicles? Because when I think of the word junkyard, I think of something like what we have down on the Troy Road. These cars are smashed, there's, they're everywhere. When I think about a storage lot, that means maybe somebody's vehicle's been in an accident, it's been, you know, a tree fell on it. They're, they're taking it into a location until the insurance adjuster can make, you know, heads or tails of what's going on and then the car's removed and then it's taken to a junkyard.
And that's true a lot of times and a lot of, but a lot of times, these vehicles end up being abandoned and left there for long periods of time as well, for many years, as you can see at many of the auto body shops and the used car dealerships that we have around the city. The ordinance simply says, storage of more than five dismantled, wrecked, inoperable or unlicensed motor vehicles on a single parcel of non-residential property should be a junkyard.
What else, what else is allowed in heavy industrial?
Everything you would normally have in LID. Airports, aluminum can and glass bottle collection, crushing distribution, veterinary facilities, automobile junkyards, auto repair garages, bedding and carpet manufacturing, brick tile pottery yards, bus repair, storage terminals, chemical manufacturing, household and industrial, coal and wood yards, cotton gins, cotton waste, customary accessory uses including open storage, feed and seed stores, fertilizer manufacturing, flour and feed mills, foundries, hatcheries, ice and cold storage, livestock sale barns, machine and welding shops, machine tool manufacturing, meat packing and poultry processing, metal fabricating, mixing plants for concrete or paving, monument works and sales, plastic, rubber and glass products manufacturing, public works and public utilities, quarries, radio and television station towers, sawmills, planing mills, wooden box factories.
Kevin.
I was giving you all of them.
Additional questions for staff?
So when the planning board met on May 5th, was there any input at all from the residents on Johnson Street? Any input from anybody other than the property owners of MHK or?
I don't believe that anybody spoke against it. There were a few people here. I don't know how they would gone on that, but this was initiated, we noted that there was potentially an issue with vehicles there a couple of years ago. We did talk with the owners at the time, let them know about the definition. It had to be kept under five, couldn't have more than five junked and operable and licensed vehicles. A complaint from a resident on Johnson Street is what spurred us to go back out and check on this again.
Is there, is there any option, Kevin, is there any option that we have for the, for the business owner in order to hide or maybe shield the cars behind the fence? What if, is there some sort of a, of a, you know, blockage they could put up or something to kind of disrupt the view?
And that's, that's really what we were working with, with them on. We did a couple of different things. One, we identified all the different parcels out there that we could find in the city that were either zoned for HID that would allow this or that were in the future land use map that we felt could be rezoned for it. There was a list of about 30 properties. I think out of those, probably at least six or seven of them would have worked. The other option that we looked at, the zoning ordinance says open storage outside storage. So technically, if you had a building of some sort, some kind of garage that you were keeping these in, similar to what we had at Old Charlotte, we did not consider those that were inside that building as being open storage. So that's kind of a, I guess a loophole if you would, but we were working with them on that. We haven't made any, I don't think we've made any, any progress towards that yet though.
What we had them do on the Old Charlotte Road was to put the slats in the chain link fence. I think that's, answers your question there.
Correct.
So technically, is this the same type of operation that we had on the Old Charlotte Road?
That's not, since I've been here, that's not how we've, we've interpreted this and I've never heard it interpreted that way with the slats. You're required to have fencing regardless, but this is just open storage of vehicles outside of a building. And that's what we've always gone with. The vehicles that were inside that building on Old Charlotte, we did not consider against them. It was all those that had outside there, all over the place. Those are the ones that constituted a violation.
And this is going to be an outside one as well?
Right now it is, right now it is. So we've discussed some options for some limited, you know, a garage or some kind of shed or something like that, they could stick these things in. Just those that are junk, basically junked and unlicensed. If they get one that's towed, they're going to be picked up 30 days later, still licensed, that's really, that doesn't meet the definition of a junkyard.
Kevin, the pictures, the pictures, and I've actually been by this business, I don't think you can see the proposed storage lot where these gentlemen or these folks are proposing. I don't think you can see any of these, you know, vehicles from Highway 52, is that correct? So you can only really see it just from Johnson Street, is that right? I mean, if you're riding up Highway 52.
Well, there's, I mean, there's a little bit of a rise right here. So no, you can't see them from 52, but you can see them from Johnson Street and Rotary Street down here as well as over here. So pretty much the whole back insides of the property.
The automobiles that are there now, how long have they been on the property? There's a white one, a red truck.
Yeah.
Some type of Jeep, it looks like.
We haven't been back out there to check since we started, we were trying to work with them on this. We've held proceeding with the violations on any of that, so I couldn't say. There are several that have been there for quite some time, I know that. I don't know how many of them exactly have been there for how long though.
So if we're working with them, what are we doing tonight? Are we, are they receptive to what is being discussed?
That I don't know. I believe we tried to get in touch with Eric, I think, about this last week. I didn't hear anything back, but I just got our lines crossed there, but we were going to propose to put this off until August while we continue to work on it with them. They want to hear it tonight, that's their, that's their option.
Right.
They recommended for denial.
Further questions or staff? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for your time. When we started this process, we didn't, we didn't ask for HID. We really had no desire to be HID. We just want to find something that we can all live with and work together on. Mr. Robinson flat out told me the only district that would work for this is HID and that he would fight me every step of the way. If you'll go back and listen to the minutes of the planning board, it was total chaos. None of the board members really understood what we were trying to do. But anyway, so looking up general highway business use and we own this whole property and yes, it is on two different things, so we'd like to get it all zoned the same way, whether that be general highway business, light industrial. We just need to get it zoned because our business is growing. Thank goodness, we need the area. You know, we want to keep producing a productive business in Almaral. I don't want to feel like a burden to the city of Almaral in any way and, you know, I hope I never do feel that way. This is a huge investment for us. You know, this is nothing that we want to turn into a junkyard. That's not what we're looking to do. We have never sold a single piece off of any car that is on that lot. We're tied by state regulations, so if insurance comes in, once they make a decision, that vehicle is moved out. So that usually happens within 10 days because the insurance company is not going to pay more stores than they want to. You know, they pay $35 a day and if they let it rack up 90 days, at that point, you know, they're not going to fix it. They're just going to say, here's the title, get rid of the car. So that, those cars move usually within 10, 15 days, worst case. The cars that are sitting there that we've towed for, say the city, we do a lot of towing for the city of Almaral, city's short staffed, they don't have time to sit on the side of the road for 45 minutes waiting on a wrecker to come from, nor would. But when those cars or they don't have insurance on them, let's say that. So we have to turn in the paperwork to the state of North Carolina. That paperwork requires a process, you know, they have to email, they have to send a letter out to the certified owner, then we have to wait for that letter to come back. Once we get that letter back, we apply for title. Once we get the title from North Carolina, we take that car immediately to the crusher. They don't sit around because that's our money sitting there. So we can't just let it sit there and, and grow. You know, that's not benefiting us at all. We're in a business to make money. You know, as the agriculture business grows, we've actually put in for a, a new part with Massey Ferguson. We want to bring in the heavy agriculture equipment, the 200 plus horsepower tractors. We're going to need every piece of this property to be able to store those large tractors on. If we bring a 225 horsepower tractor in now, it's going to tie up our whole front lot. That's not feasible for us. We need to be able to use the whole property for what we designed to buy the property for and it's my fault that I didn't get it zoned before I bought it. I totally understand that. So I'm just respectfully asking, you know, that we'll be glad to plant trees, we'll put, we'll plant trees, we'll put the slats in there, you know, we'll do anything we can to make this work for everybody. But I do not care nothing about being heavy industrial. On the general highway, it says we can be automobile repair, garages, including bodyworks. We're no different. We're waiting on cars to get released. You know, we're not selling parts off of them. We're not selling hoods and fenders and tires or anything. So, and I asked about a variance. I asked Kevin about a variance and he said the city doesn't do variances. So in light industrial, on y'all's website, I pulled this directly from y'all's website and it says, it's on all of them, but on light industrial, it says, spalling special uses are permitted when authorized by the city council after the city council holds a public hearing. And this goes on to say, college universities, technical institutes, public elementary, secondary schools, private schools having curriculum substantially the same as offered in public schools and including dormitories when located on the campus, which really don't apply. And then it says automobile towing and temporary storage services. That's all we're looking for is temporary storage service. We do not want to be a junkyard. I cannot recoup my investment on my property as a junkyard. We're providing a city service for the police department and I think that, you know, we do it in a timely manner, probably more so than a lot of the tow yards do. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys have or if Eric would like to add anything to it.
Staff have questions?
Well, I just appreciate, Mr. King, I appreciate you clarifying because when I, like I said, just to reiterate, when I hear junkyard, I think you're selling hoods, fenders, taillights, hubcaps, stuff like that. So, I mean, I think that, I think that that automatically has a negative connotation.
Sure.
So, but when you say storage lot, meaning you're going to have these vehicles out of there on, in a timely fashion, that, at least from my stance and my perspective, I'm not sure if the, the planning and zoning board knew the difference between those two or not. I wasn't there. I did watch part of the meeting on, on the, online, but for me, that changes the whole dynamic of this request because it is a storage lot and, you know, as I ride by your place of business, you do a nice job of keeping it clean, keeping it neat and keeping it proper. And I think that speaks volumes about your.
It's important.
Mindset.
Sure. Nobody wants to do business with a junkyard. I mean, and if I have a $250,000 tractor out there and they see a junkyard, they're not going to be too interested in buying a $250,000 tractor from me because they're going to doubt or question my ability.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not trying to do that. During the planning board meeting, I would really encourage you guys to go watch that because it was really the most chaotic thing I've ever been a part of. One of the members even asked to be, just not even make a vote on it, to send it to city council because they didn't feel like they were qualified to make the vote. And there again, HID is only what we put down because Mr. Robinson told us that's what we had to put down. I am totally suitable with anything you guys see fit where we can work together.
If I may, Brandon, it appears you want to be a good neighbor.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Listening to what you're saying, have you gone across the street, over to Johnson Street, to any of the neighbors?
We have.
And explain what's going on and tell me what they have, what feedback they provided you?
Yes, sir. So as Mr. Robinson stated, they did get a complaint. So Ms. Thompson, who's lived there for a number of years, sweet lady, she just didn't know what we were doing. She was concerned that we were going to turn it into some kind of just growed up lot, you know, and that's not the agenda because we were taking trees down and we had some trees over there and we got those trees up immediately. As soon as she filed the complaint, we got the trees up because that was her concern, the snakes and the rats and things like that. So, you know, it's our intentions to keep that well manicured. And other neighbors back there said that they would much rather see that than some more low income housing come in that would really bring the neighborhood down. There's, and I, and I'm not trying to speak bad of anybody, but there's some rental houses there that don't have the desirable folks in that you'd want in your neighborhood sometimes and, and therefore that's the reason we put up a fence all the way around the property because it's important to secure our, you know, our investment. So, but yes, we have spoke to many of them and they're great customers and we work together and it's great.
I know Mrs. Thompson, so if I were to give her a call tomorrow and ask her what her feelings are, what would she tell me?
If you know Ms. Thompson, you know that's a hard question to answer.
I understand. This is a hard thing we're in right now.
Absolutely it is. I respect that. Totally understand, so.
To satisfy all folks.
Yep. And that's the intentions is to be good neighbors. So I think that today she's fine with it, you know, I mean, at the, she was here at the last meeting, at the planning meeting and she didn't get up to speak, because I even asked her, would you like to get up and speak? And she didn't want to get up and speak.
Yeah, she wouldn't do that.
Yeah, so, but she was here that night, so.
As we, as we talked to her about the complaint, she tried to call Ms. Martha Hall there to...
Eric, step in the microphone, would you?
She tried to retract her statement complaining.
Yeah, she tried to call.
Because she didn't know what, what was going on at the time.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, she did. She's a sweet lady and she's concerned for her neighborhood and I, I respect that, you know?
Been there a long time. We have to really realize that this is a community where a lot of folks have spent their entire life on that one street.
I totally understand that, yes, sir, and I respect that. I mean, and she knows that if she ever needs anything, she could call us and we'd come running. And that goes for any neighbor back there. We want to be, we work on everybody's equipment back there, you know, so it's just, we, we work to be good neighbors, good stewards.
Thank you.
Question for staff. I do have one more question for staff. Mr. Robinson, I heard him say that he don't necessarily have a preference for heavy industrial, possibly light industrial. Was it a possibility that one of them options could be approved with conditions, you know, under a conditional use permit?
The reason that we did not recommend going with, and first of all, I'd like to back up, we did not ever say that we were going to fight Mr. King on this every step of the way. That is, that is not true. The, the option, the option of the storage, the storage onsite there, the towing storage, we did, we did look at that. The definition that's in there right now, unfortunately, I don't think really does much to take it away from the definition that we currently have for junkyards. I mean, it still excludes junked and operable vehicles from the list, so as long as those are there, that doesn't really provide much help. If it's just a parking lot and you're just keeping licensed operable vehicles there, then it's just a parking lot.
Right. So it, I'm just wondering, when he said something about he, he's waiting on clearance to get it off the property, if we put conditions like, say, no vehicle must be on the property more, no more than say a max of 20, 30 days or something of that nature? I don't, I don't know. I'm just throwing a number out there, you know.
I would have to look, I would have to look into that if that's an option. I mean, certainly when you do an SGP, there are specific criteria that are listed in that definition for what can go there. I'd have to look and see if that was an actual option that you could do, the council could do.
Even as far as criteria like, no, no parts must, could be sold, you know, off the vehicles.
It does say that. It includes that, but, but the length of time, the stay of the vehicles is a, is a concern with that. And it's a, it's an enforcement concern as well. I mean, it's, and I would also remind council, you know, it's been brought up several times that we want to clean up.
Right.
The properties, especially up and down 52. And we have, we have started that process. This is by far not the first property that's been cited. I think you might have received a list recently with about 30 of them that we did on 52 and we have received some compliance with that. Staff does also have concerns about going HID here or LID really for that matter. First that it could represent spot zoning, being the zoning that's there right now in the future land use map, the precedent that may set for the surrounding area and for other properties and also the precedent that may set with every other property that's in violation right now up and down 52.
Follow up to that, since you're the...
Follow-up to that, since you're there, will you bring up the map that has what the current zoning is?
That has the what?
The current zoning, the color map. There you go. Thanks.
Further questions? Staff?
There's a comments too?
Yeah.
I just, you know, I would like to, I would like for us to, as, as a council, to look at this thing, because to the points that have been made by Mr. Robinson and everybody in the room knows that there's a lot of junkyards in Albemarle. I can get in the car right now and within three minutes, I can take you to 10 of them right now. We never hear from those people. We typically never hear any plan of keeping it clean. Here we've got a small business owner, two small business owners, who are standing before us tonight, basically saying, I, we need, we want help. Okay, we're willing to work with you. We don't want to move our business out of the city. Um, if any of you have been up Johnson Street and looked at this property that we're talking about tonight, it's, in my mind, it's not a junkyard. It's a storage lot. And I think that it's very important that we, that we keep those, those things in mind, that there's a lot of difference between a junkyard and a storage lot.
But as, as staff, in terms of enforcement, it, we, we cannot make any kind of subjective calls on that. We have to look at what we've got here in the ordinance as it's been defined and apply that across the board to all the property owners there, unfortunately.
I understand that. I understand that.
So Kevin, you, when this thing was on, I think the 8th, 16th or something, and it was asked to be continued. And then you made the comment, I think, opening statement, that you had suggested that we hold off on it until August. Tonight?
Yes.
For tonight.
We hadn't had any communication with the, uh, property owners since the last continuance.
Okay, so it appears to me that there's still, for whatever reason, there's still a need, there's still an opportunity to do some compromising or something. I mean, we hear, we've heard one of the plaintiffs or one of the requesters say that they want to go to HID and, um, you know, there is some LID across the street, um, across the road, actually, across 52. Should, should we, since the request was to hold it open until August, should we get, send it back and say, they're all here tonight, can they go and talk? I mean, to see if there's something that can be worked out. We've heard from the petitioner, the petitioner does not want to do, would prefer not to use HID. So, I mean, it's cut and dry, or we allow Kevin to have that time?
He's often does with the build, a three-sided building. We cannot afford to build a three-sided building right now, with everything in the building and the range that's going right now. I mean, that's just not feasible for us to build a three-sided building. We've had no problem putting up three slats or anything like that. That's horrible. Build a huge three-sided warehouse or whatever, it's just not feasible and tangible for us, you know. And we need to buy property out on 2427 outside of the city. And, you know, if we put it up ourselves, because we bought property, we're now in the city. So we decided we'd sell the property on 2427 and maintain our position in the city. And that's what we want to do. I mean, we're established here, we want to be a part of the city. You know, and I know that 52 is not a huge booming area like it used to be and everything booming on 2427. But, you know, we want to stay on 52. It gives us a great opportunity and I feel like it gives the city a great opportunity. We provide services to the city on a daily basis. We appreciate that. We're not asking to leave the city, but if we, our hands are kind of tied at this point. We've got to grow. You know, as the economy, who knows what the economy picks to do? And we're going to have to make acts to make use of every possible square inch of that property that we can and so.
Mr. Whitley?
Uh, just to, I guess for my own self, to state the issues I have. There's no LID anywhere around. There's no HID anywhere around that zoning, so it'd be just that property. Plus, to zone it, HID opens it up to anything you can do on HID. So, you know, I'm certainly in favor of continuing to try to find some zoning that would work or some resolution to it. But as far as zoning it, what the request is now, I just couldn't support that.
What? And again, just to make sure I understand, was your request HID or was that just?
We, we had Kevin tell us what we had to apply for and he told us we had to apply for HID to be able to, to be able to do this. I mean, and we've tried to have the junkyard.
Okay.
We want to be a junkyard. We desire to be a junkyard.
And just to be fair, it's, it's not our intent to see, certainly their business go. I mean, the, the, um, uh, the tractors and, and the outdoor supply and everything is great there. I mean, it's in GHBD, it's, it's zoned for that. Um, I do think there's a significant amount of residential growth going on on Johnson Street. I think there's opportunity for that as it is zoned right now. Um, and as I mentioned, you can tow a vehicle here if it's, if it's a temporary thing and the vehicle's in good shape and everything. It's effectively just a parking lot where you're keeping the vehicle at the time. Um, you can have another property, you can even lease property, you know, from somebody else, but you can have another property where those junk vehicles could go in a number of different locations that are in HID already zoned right now in the city, um, as well as in certain areas in the county. So it's, it's
You can't make somebody sell your property. You say you have your piece of property, originally you have your piece of property. You know, that's great if you could, but that's not an option. We've got all our money invested to fix the property.
Mr. Whitley, I have another.
Um, did, did somebody ask if there was a zoning that has special use permit that would allow this kind of thing where we could put conditions?
Uh, the special use permit, the only thing that we have right now that would really potentially cover this would be the towing storage. That's up to 50 vehicles. It still doesn't cover junked inoperable unlicensed vehicles. Um, so that would still be, that would still be a, a source of, of issue with this. That's why we didn't recommend that they go for LID and try to get that special, we didn't think it would actually do what they needed. HID is really the one route to have, uh, what there is there right now. Uh, you could do a special use, rezone whatever portion you want to, or all of it, what have you, uh, as LID. And you could go and do a special use permit. You could attach some conditions. Again, you got to make sure they're practical conditions that we're going to be able to enforce as well, so.
So right there, may I? So my original comment was, we got the parties here, we ought to talk about what those things are. And I just heard something that was not, I think I just heard Kevin say something that wasn't building a building, okay? You gave another option just then. Possibly with the, with some Okay, but, but it is now, okay? Whether it was then or not then, it is now.
As it's defined in there, the criteria as it's defined in there right now, the definition of that does not, in, in our opinion, from looking at it, would be very hard to actually we felt that this is going to end up in the same, in the same situation that it already is.
Yeah, okay. That it is now.
So either a change of the text on that, or you could attach some additional conditions on there.
There's where I was coming. Because you had, you made the comment about you might, you wanted some time to talk with them. So if that's part of it, that can be discussed, then I think then that's where we go. Because if not, the reason we have a planning and zoning board is to listen to these things in their entirety and to question them. I mean, that's the reason we have them.
And it was discussed at planning and zoning board. I do think that they had an understanding of that, but
They did.
As it's defined right now, it didn't, you know.
But I, I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Hall that, and I think you said coming up front that we were trying to get in touch with one another and it just hadn't happened. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah.
So is there room for, uh, based upon what, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Hall was saying, that we could have an ongoing dialogue to see whether we could get some, uh, contingencies that would be there that would be workable?
Uh, I'm happy to look at this again. Uh, the, 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 the two options we presented with, you know, showing all the other properties that are available out there.
Right.
Putting a building onsite, um, you know, apparently are not workable, uh, for the owner. Uh, the issue that you're going to run into is if you do the SGP's, you, you still have to rezone some or all of that property to LID in order to do that. Um, and
Just trying to
Yeah.
be open-minded and let folks know that we're, we're not here to immediately hit a gavel and say, this is it. Is that we want to be open, listen to what you have to say, but at the same time, we have to be able to stick with the ordinances as they're written.
And I totally agree. And we, we, as soon as we got the letter, we came down and sat in a coffee table and we tried to take that approach honestly. I mean, that was our intent, to take that approach, where we can work together and find a happy middle. You know, and I don't know why, he told the members, tell us that he's going to fight us every step of the way. And he's also told us that we, he wants to let his junk up in his city, you know. Eric, anybody told you? I mean, so
Well, I appreciate you doing that.
We want to be reasonable, we want to work together. But we totally want to work together. As far as the, the timely manner, we have 10 days, we have 10 days, great period that the insurance has, the owner has, whoever, and then we file paperwork. Things you can go like where we go big, um, it, it put a whole different, uh, matter on getting the estate to follow up with paperwork. So it's taking longer to do a little bit harder. It's got my money dialed up sitting there, you know, I don't see paying when it's sitting in my yard, when it's more like that. So I want to get rid of it quick with my cane.
Mayor, I'd like to put a motion on the table.
Hold on just a minute, hold on just a minute. This is a public hearing. Anyone else who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Ms. Birch? We're considering HID tonight. Give me the options. Can it be continued with them to change it? Or do we have to mo, take a motion on this or make a decision and then start the process over?
So if the intent is to postpone this, it's from what I'm hearing, to allow staff and the petitioners to have a opportunity to come with some options. We can postpone to a future date without restarting the whole public hearing process. But I would recommend just a courtesy notice being sent back out if it's going to be postponed for a couple of months, back out to the neighboring property owner.
So you're saying that we can continue in HID and at later point, they want to change it to something other than HID? We can do that.
That's correct.
Follow-up question though, mayor. Do we not, do we leave the public hearing open?
Yes.
To that, I think that's what my proposal would be, to leave it open.
Typical statute, when it comes to rezonings, is you can downzone during a rezoning hearing to something less intense, but not upzone.
Have a motion by Councilmember Townsend that we leave the public hearing open and continue it to council and, uh, to staff and the applicant have a chance to work something out if possible.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, really quick, do we have a date on that or are we just leaving it open-ended?
You want to make me another motion, Mr. Townsend, with a date? Give us, give us a deadline?
To when it
I'd like to sample from Mr. Robinson, but how long do you think you need? Thirty days?
Yeah, I mean, it, it depends on whether or not, if there has to be tax, tax amendment changes or if it's just a rezoning and an SGP.
August 1st.
Thirty days, thirty days.
August 1st.
Yeah, we can probably work with that.
Have a motion by Councilmember Townsend that we continue it to August the 1st.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Moving on to number four, ordinance 2235, to consider zoning map amendment 2208 to rezone 1.31 acres on Highway 2427 from LID to General Highway Business District. Again, I'll have staff to introduce.
Thank you, council. Uh, this petition here, I'll open it up for you. I apologize. Okay, so this is a map amendment here for tax parcel 13339. It's a vacant parcel off of North Carolina 2427 bypass west and Jeffrey Street. And it's approximately 1.31 acres. And the applicant owner is RPM Associates LLC, and it's in care of Mr. Randy Malden, who is present tonight. And its existing is LID Light Industrial District and is proposed as GHBD, General Highway Business District. And so the applicant's statement is there's currently GHBD zoning to the east, west and to the south. GHBD is the natural use for the parcel. I'm just going to scroll down to the map so we can look at it here. So the subject tract that we're talking about is highlighted in blue and it's got the number one there. So if you see to the north in the gray color, it's LID. And to the south and to the east and to the west, that pink color is your GHBD. And so there are water and sewer is available off of Jeffrey Street and in North Carolina 2427 bypass west. And the future land use map classifies this area as industrial and heavy commercial uses. These areas are intended to, excuse me, accommodate traditional industrial uses and commercial uses such as warehousing and distribution centers on individual tracks of land and located within the, uh, within coordinated industrial parks. Um, it does talk about some traditional, uh, commercial uses in there as well. So the environment here, it's not located in a regulated, regulated flood plain or, or watershed district. And there does not appear to be any significant environmental impacts on this property. While there is contamination on other properties adjacent to the Jeffreys plant, which is to the north, there have been no studies showing the presence of contamination on this site. Here's the future land use map, and the star right there highlights the area. And this is our aerial here, as you can see, there's some, uh, used car lots and car lots here to the south. There's a gas station here at the corner and there's another one to the, uh, west there that you can't see in this aerial. And actually, this structure to the east is no longer there. This is just some of the pictures here, just looking at the property, it's wooded. And that's looking west at one of the used, uh, car lots there. And to the east, there was a structure here, but it's no longer there. So I'll read the staff comments. The applicant intends to rezone this vacant lot from Light Industrial to General Highway Business in order to harmonize the subject parcel with neighboring prod, properties along the 2427 bypass that are currently zoned, General Highway Business District. The said lot is located in the industrial land use classification in the future land use map, across the street from general residential and commercial on the other side of the intersection. It is along a major thoroughfare with accessibility to other commercial uses such as gas stations, convenience stores and automobile sales. Furthermore, GHBD would provide as a transition from surrounding residential development and adjoining commercially zoned properties to the existing Light Industry District, located directly to the north. While the subject tract is surrounded by GHBD to the southeast and west, it is important to consider all uses allowed within the General Highway Business District, because this is a general district rezoning request. And so at the June 2nd, 2022, uh, Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, the board unanimously made a recommendation to city council to approve the rezoning based on the future land use map amendment statement. Given the proposed use, the parcel's proposed use under the future land use plan and its proximity to existing General Highway Business District zoned parcels and uses, there are merits for the proposed rezoning to be considered for approval. While inconsistent with the city's future land use plan, the use is not inconsistent with the commercial nature of the surrounding intersection. A change to the future land use map is to be considered. And so there's our consistency and inconsistency in future land use map amendment statement.
Counsel, have questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Mr. Malden, you signed up. Do you want to speak?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, my name's Brandon Malden. I'm, uh, managing partner of RPM Associates, owner of the property. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you will probably remember walking through the Jeffreys building with me. And this is the remaining property that I own from that. I sold the building. And this is an acre cut off of the nine acres that the Jeffreys plant originally was. My intention is to sell the property. Uh, if I can't sell it, I may develop it myself, but it will still be developed for business purposes, which I feel like the General Highway Business is the best. And I feel like that's the natural use for it, considering what's beside it across 2427 to the east, to the west. It will still be bordered by the Light Industrial, which will probably be used for manufacturing soon. So I think that will still be in good compliance. So I don't think there'll be any, matter of fact, I've talked with both property owners, the property line meets, neither has a problem with the rezoning. So I feel like it's a fair request and I hope you'll approve it. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Move the public hearing to close.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend to close the public hearing. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, what are your wishes on ordinance 2235?
Move approval. With consistency. With inconsistency. And with inconsistency. I think it's consistency, isn't it?
Consistent.
Consistent with consistency.
Future land use map amendment statement is what you'll be.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hall to approve with the future land use map amendment statement.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number five. Ordinance 2236, to consider zoning map amendment 22 Ordinance twenty-two thirty-six to consider zoning map amendment twenty-two oh nine to rezon one point three-nine acre split zone parcel Ash Street from R eight to R six. Staff, would you introduce?
This map amendment petition here is tax parcel twenty-six four seven two. It's a vacant parcel off of Ash Street near Snug Street. It's approximately ten point two-two acres. Applicant Jeff Jernigan, a VP of Development, said he is wishing to be here, and he is present. And the app, the owner is AMCO Holdings LLC. So this request is, has currently some R six urban residential district, which is about eight point three-eight acres, and R eight neighborhood residential district at one point three-nine plus or minus acres. So the proposed amendment here is to get the whole parcel in unison, which will be that one point three-nine acres and just make it continuous in there all to R six there, urban residential district. And that's essentially what has been explained here by the applicant statement for proposed request. The property currently has two different zoning designations. The change allows for a uniform zoning across the entire property, which we'll see. The proposed use here would be single-family attached townhomes. And I'll scroll down here to the current zoning map, and I can... So as you can see here, this small portion of yellow inside the blue lines is currently R eight. And so they'll be essentially, essentially expanding the R six just to be with inside the blue area here. So the twenty-twenty-eight land use plan, the future land use map classes, classifies these parcels as general residential area. These areas are located within the city's corporate limit and public utilities are provided. Areas classified as general residential typically consist of lots ranging from one-quarter to one-half acre in size and have established network of roads and are well-connected. It also features areas of low-density development with roads that are not well-connected and frequently terminate in cul-de-sacs. Compact residential neighborhoods that set aside significant natural vistas, parkland, parkland, landscape features, and other rural heritage features for permanent conservation are encouraged. And so the environment here, this property is not located in the regulated floodplain or watershed district, and there does not appear to be any significant environmental impacts on this property. And so go along with the future land use map, this star is located here. And you can see old, you can see Salisbury Avenue and US fifty-two north coming down. This is just aerial photograph. It has been cleared some there. It's not fully wooded. And that's looking at the view from Ash Street, looking at the property. You can see it's been cleared. And looking to the south there, that's where the ball fields will be. So at the June second, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two Planning and Zoning Board meeting, the board unanimously made a recommendation for city council to approve the rezoning based on the consistency statement. The applicant intends to rezone a portion of this vacant lot, one point three-nine acres, from R eight neighborhood residential district to R six urban residential in order to have a more uniform zoning district on the property. In addition, the applicant wishes to utilize the property for single-family attached townhomes. Staff believes this rezoning would provide an opportunity to expand the variety of housing types available to all citizens in the area. Furthermore, this parcel has direct access to Ash Street, followed by Snug Street, which would provide future residents quick access to Old Salisbury Road, a collector road, and US fifty-two north, a principal arterial roadway for daily travels. While the acreage is designated as general residential on the future land use map, it is adjacent to neighborhood residential, and the bulk of this property is already zoned R six. Though it is the intent of the applicant to use this property for single-family attached homes, it is important to consider all uses allowed within the urban residential district because this is a general district rezoning request. So given the proposed use, the parcel's proposed use under the future land use plan, existing R six zoning on the property and availability to infrastructure, there are merits for the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the city's future land use plan. And so we have our consistency, inconsistency in future land use map amendment statements.
Counsel, have questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Hey, so I'm Sarah Honeycutt. This is my first council meeting. I do a lot of stuff downtown as far as volunteers. I do the car shows, things like that, so this is new to me. But I also am a homeowner on Snug Street. My husband and I reside at six oh three Snug Street. And I also just purchased a home on Ash Street at fifteen eleven Ash Street back in December. As of today, I just put in an offer on fifteen, I'm sorry, fifteen eleven Ash Street, and I just put an offer on fifteen oh seven. So I'm here because I have had a concern about what they're going to do because that neighborhood is right behind my home for years. And my husband and I, we have taken very good care of our lot. We have, everything's clean and put together. We're literally right at the corner of six oh three and Ash. The house right beside, okay. Okay. So the house, will you pull that? Okay. So this house here, okay, that's my home right there. And then the home right beside it is what I purchased in December. Today, I just did an offer on this one. And then I called because, and spoke with Travis today because I was a little concerned about the zoning and what it's going to be before I go and make a purchase on this home. So I really honestly don't have any complaints yet. I've just am concerned as far as what kind of townhomes they're going to be. There's so many different types of townhomes. I used to live in Virginia Beach in the city. I've lived in Charlotte. They're, they're anywhere from just basic, you know, town, residential townhomes to stories and stories. So my concern as a homeowner is I wish that they would leave that area right there, the R eight, the neighborhood, because it is on a neighborhood street. All of that is neighborhood area. Now, that back area here, I think is completely fine for townhouse structure, but I guess like, I guess what I'm saying is that I'm actually affected by this. I feel a lot because I do own two of these properties, and I'm in the process, process of the third one. And I will be affected more than anyone, I feel, as far as this goes. I have small children. I also have a sixteen-year-old son. Our area is pretty, pretty quiet area. I mean, we have the, we do have the battered women's shelter near us, so we do get sirens and stuff quite frequently. But other than that, as far as the crime and things like that, I mean, it's, it's really nothing crazy. My concern is bringing in all these extra families. What time, what type of structural, structural building will they be as far as height-wise and things like that? And if there was a way that they could leave the front part of Ash Street here as a neighborhood zone. So I don't really know what I'm doing. Like I said, this is my first time coming to a council meeting. But as far as myself personally, I received the letter in the mail, and that's why I wanted to come and see what it was about tonight, because I do have two properties there and working on the third right now. So I needed to know if I should continue with that third purchase or if I needed to kind of withdraw from it and how the townhomes will affect our area as far as depreciation or appreciation value goes.
I can't give you an answer on depreciation or appreciation. And to be honest with you, this is a rezoning, so technically, we can't ask exactly what kind of townhomes are going to be built.
Okay.
But the owner may be willing to talk to you, or the potential buyer may be willing to talk to you.
Okay.
But I can't answer, ask him that question in a rezoned.
Okay.
But Ash Street is currently R eight right now?
R eight on the front.
On the?
Yeah.
And if I could help to chime in here and answer that a little bit, so we got R six right here. This is by right zoned R six. That does allow for multifamily as well as townhomes. Those townhomes have to be on a three thousand square foot lot. They can make that smaller through clustering. R eight also allows for townhomes as well. So they can already do that. The lots have to be a little bit larger for that, for them. So it's really just a matter of size. They primarily wanted this, they could have kind of a consistent design all throughout. It would affect marginally, it would affect the number of lots they can have, but not drastically.
Kevin, I don't know if this is appropriate right here or not, but it appears that the only access would be on Ash Street. So what would be the limitation on the number of townhouses that could be in there? I don't see another access.
Yeah, that's, and that's something we would get into when it comes to actual design. With the fire marshal, there's concerns. Of course, we've got concerns there as well. We could require some stubout somewhere. We've looked at some options on that, but it will be something that's going to need to be addressed before those get approved.
It appears currently to be landlocked unless it goes over to Hollywood through that, through a lot.
It's, it's, yeah, no, it's, it's landlocked right now. Well, it's not landlocked, but the, it, the only entrance is on Ash Street right now at this time.
Further questions? Comments? Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone else who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I just...
Just, just for the record, even though we already had it, give me your name and address so you can get an address.
Jason Brittany, twenty-four one-on-one Cedar Ridge Avenue in Albemarle. We moved out here four years ago, and one of the reasons we moved out here was, one, for the small community and to be a part of it. But we actually, what, exactly what Sarah is talking about is what impacted us and made us move. So we had some acres behind our home. They were rezoning it for townhomes, and it was what she described as the worst-case scenario. So they had, I think, don't quote me, but I believe it was eighteen acres, and they put seventy-two townhomes right behind us with, you could almost reach your neighbor out the window and handshake. So I would say, I would back Sarah that there is a significant concern. If you start putting in that type of development, it changes the entire dynamic of what you're trying, you know, for a community-based land area use. So I just wanted, I mean, that was my experience with Charlotte. I just wanted to, you have a valid concern and I'm concerned for you.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Anyone else care to speak for or against?
I just have a question to staff, but come on up first.
Come on, come on up.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for having me. I really appreciate it. I'm Jeff Jernigan with Arbor Construction. We would be the developer slash builder, hopefully, or maybe the builder, and we'll have somebody else develop it. We're, we're not entirely sure, but we built a few houses in Albemarle a few years ago, and we had a great experience. And we had an opportunity at that time to build several more in that community, but for us, being out of Charlotte, it wasn't quite the right fit. So we continue to look for more projects, and when this townhome project came along and the way that planning had supported it, we, we instantly started due diligence and stepped right into this project, the contract on it as quickly as we could and went to work. I understand everybody's concerns, and as we get into the, the planning phase of the project, more will come out of what type of townhome. But we're a small company. We're very well-known in Charlotte as one of the top renovation companies in South Charlotte, and we build a quality product. I don't, I mean, obviously, there's market conditions that we have to focus on, and what can you sell, what can't you sell, and what is the price of a piece of property worth out here versus to other areas that we build in? Statesville, Lincolnton, Lancaster, we're building a lot down in there. So we would have to look at what that product looks. But, you know, one thing I can say is when that process starts, we, we want to be able to execute and be able to deliver. We want to build a relationship with Albemarle. It seems like it's a very welcoming community for new development and growth. So that, that's why I wanted just to kind of embark at this particular moment.
Ms. Hall, you have a question?
Just to follow up on, I think a comment that Kevin made originally, or maybe you made originally, Travis, that currently it's R six, is that correct?
Yeah, the larger portion is R six.
Right, and the other one is R eight. And currently, your comment back to Ms. Honeycutt was that even as it is right now, their townhomes could be there. Is that correct? On eight and six, but like it is right now, they could be there.
Yeah, the lots need to be a little bit larger on R eight than they would on R six. R six allows for multifamily as well. Obviously, that's not much being proposed, but just keeping all options on the table. But the majority of the property is zoned for R six right now. Primary difference, if townhomes were to be done here, be it they could be on three thousand instead of four thousand square foot parcels, which makes a difference when you're doing townhomes.
In R eight.
Further questions? Comments?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Townsend to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, how do you, which one do with ordinance twenty-two thirty-six?
Move to approve ordinance twenty-two thirty-six to rezon one point three-nine acre split zone parcel on Ash Street from R eight to R six with the consistency statement.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Counsel, under agenda adjustments, I have multiple. Want to bring the budget up right behind number nine before we get to the consent agenda. Number two, also want to remove items number fourteen. Item number twenty.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
From the...
Consent agenda?
Yeah, from the consent agenda. Fourteen and twenty, they may be talked about separately. And also number nineteen. Staff has a change in that one, so they need to talk about separately.
And you're bringing the budget?
Up right behind number nine.
So it will go before?
And then also at the end of the agenda, right after number thirty-two, I want to add the discussion of the annual plan and five-year plan for Department of Public Health.
And before you add that one, Your Honor, we've just been given that tonight. I would respectfully say that with the depth of that, that maybe we need to put that on tomorrow night at the end of our regular, our meeting tomorrow night so that it gives us time. I'm looking at...
I have no problem with that.
I'm just thinking, this is just given to us today, and the depth of that, it may take longer to look through than, and I'm just throwing that out for, so if you want to do your others first.
That's fine. Okay, totally up to counsel. I didn't know if you needed to hear it, hear the presentation tonight, so if you had questions, it could happen by tomorrow night or not.
And that might be okay if we hear it, but I've...
Yeah.
You don't have to take any action as I...
That's fine.
As I put in the email when I sent it out Friday night. Is that what counsel wishes to do? Okay. All right, I need a motion for that, for all those changes.
I move.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Now moving back to administrative reports, our unannounced delegation, excuse me. I have Billy Mills, who has signed up to speak about the storm.
Yeah, number six announced delegation from Maryland.
I did miss that.
Yeah.
Marilyn Wells and Travis McClung, Waste Manager in the Carolinas to provide an update on services. Come on up.
Y'all can come up here too? I'm having a whole entourage.
Comfort in numbers.
At least put faces with a name. So we're Waste Management. To Honorable Mayor Michael and distinguished council members, it's a pleasure to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity to present to you and give you an update on where we are. I did want to introduce some of the individuals. Y'all, I believe, have met Pat Colimba before. He has been here, he's, he oversees our North Carolina operation. But I'm very excited, some things that we've had in the works, to add additional support and management oversight of our hauling site. Travis McClung is here, and I'll let Travis tell you a little bit about himself, but Travis and I have worked together for many years, and I'm very excited to have him here. He is overseeing this general market that includes Charlotte, Granite Quarry, Albemarle. So he will be overseeing that entirety market. He comes to us from the Raleigh market, where he took a district and made it better. And so now he's coming down to this particular market. And then I also wanted to introduce you all to Tim Davis. He is our district manager that we've brought in here to our operation. And Tim's first day with us here is today. So I can't share a lot as far as what it is, but all I can say is we are where we are, and I see us taking incremental steps of improvement, and I'm very excited to have these individuals on board. So y'all have met Pat before, and Tim, I don't know that you'll have a lot to say to everyone tonight, but I did want to give an opportunity for you all to at least meet Travis and, and then give y'all a few bits of updates.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for, thanks for having us tonight and the opportunity to speak with you where we, where we stand. And, you know, look forward to getting to know, you know, everyone here in the, in the city much better as we get, we're personally new to the area, but you look forward to... But you look forward to digging in on what we can do to improve things in this challenging time. So again, thank you for your time and look forward to getting to meet everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, Travis and I have worked together for many years, and there's common denominators. We believe, one is safety, two in people, hours in the communities that we serve, and customer service. So we definitely want to see that continue. Just to give you all state of the state, an industry update, and then I'll go through some of the things that we're doing so that you all are made aware of that, and then what can you expect for the future. So a few notes that I made, just so that y'all are aware, you've probably read some of this in the news, but in the industry, meaning the waste recycling industry. But quite frankly, it really goes beyond just that. It goes into the industry as a whole, meaning trucking, transportation, which is essentially what we do. We're a trucking company. There are 40,000 less CDL drivers this year than there were this time last year. And with the rise of online and business resurgence, which is very exciting, it's become very competitive for those CDL drivers. In our industry, I always laugh and tell my sons, you have a trashy mama. I don't mean that ugly either. I mean, I'm in this particular business. But with all due respect, we have drivers that run the routes or provide an essential service, and what we're competing with, with those drivers is can they, will they want to drive a trash truck? Or do they want to drive a box for UPS or FedEx or Amazon with clean smelling boxes? So it's definitely a challenge. Supply chain has continued to be a concern. We have addressed some of those things, and I think some of those things we hope to get better. But what the supply chain issues has done is for orders that we place, because of some backlog of plastics and steels and so forth that manufacture those things, it's taking longer for us to get trucks. It's taking longer for us to get carts. So we've countered some of that with longer lead times than we've ever experienced. And we order more heavy-duty trucks than anyone else in the country, so I can't imagine what the lead time others have. Lead times are increased, but again, we're ordering more, knowing that it's going to take longer is really the way that we handle that. And service disruption has been on the rise, and that's to include us as well. Several competitors, but also really just those in the industry, have seen where they have service disruptions, where they may have delayed particular services or they suspended services. I know some municipalities that run all their services themselves, and there's been some, and you've probably seen them even within the area, where they may have suspended yard waste or they may have suspended other collections for the time being until they can resume those things. Things that we're doing, we are continuing to hire drivers. If we look at how many drivers do we need to how many drivers we have, we would say that we're equal. What we do know is that unexpected occurrences happen. So we're continuing to hire drivers. As we had drivers, particularly in Q1, that we had a lot of COVID research within our hauling site. That is something that was unexpected, but yet it still occurred. So we are continuing to hire for those driver replacements. In the process, another big focus that we've had is making sure that we're increasing our driver accountability. And so the best way to do that is to have coaching and training and be able to be out on the streets observing those drivers and then coaching them to the best behaviors. So that's hence why we've brought in some additional resources. We had a district manager in place and saw an opportunity to upgrade, and so we have Tim. So I'm very excited that he's on board, and then also with Travis coming into the picture as well, which is an additional layer of resource. Customers calling in, we also saw an opportunity to answer the phones and have more support for that. So we actually have additional resources that we have that are also answering phones so that we can be sure that we're accommodating the folks that are calling in. Driver requisitions are still open for hiring, and we will continue to hire for those particular positions. And then as far as the service, currently, are we where we want to be? I'll be truthful, we're not. Do we have plans in place that I feel very excited about that we will get better? I do. And that comes with more driver oversight, coaching, and training. When you hire drivers and you hire drivers that are newer in their positions. So we don't hire drivers right off the street. When we hire them, they go through five or six weeks of training before they're ever even side by side riding along on a route. When you bring those drivers in, those newness of the drivers, they don't have the route knowledge. They don't have the experience on the streets or on the route that they're assigned to work. So I feel strong that in the training that is happening, and quite frankly, with the additional resources of training, I feel like that driver knowledge is going to improve. And where we've brought resources in from other areas, while we appreciate that, it is not the individuals who know the route. So our goal is to get back to where we have drivers, the ones that we've brought in, to continue their training so that they can increase their route knowledge. And that's kind of where we are. So with the oversight and with the additional coaching and support that I feel like we're going to have more than what we've had in the past, I do feel cautiously optimistic as we go forward. So that can.
I have to be honest with my comments.
Yes, sir.
I think we're kind of at the point, enough's enough.
I totally hear you.
It's just gotten, you were here six, eight weeks ago, roughly? And you had a new route manager, got better for a couple of weeks.
Yep.
And then I think he's left your company or no longer doing that.
Sadly, I'm trying to think what I can, he had a medical condition that he's not able to continue.
He had improved.
We were absolutely ecstatic that he was here.
I guess what I don't understand, you see the limb truck, but your limb truck doesn't get everything. There's places, one right there here on North Street, it's been out there for weeks right now. Well, Mountain Creek, been out there for weeks, and then you see little piles all around. This week's going to make it that much worse with the storm. It's going to probably take you a couple of weeks to catch up with that. It's hard for us to understand why when we see the truck, while we're not getting the service we know we're paying for.
So I will comment, and then I'll let the operators give you more info.
And I'll say one more word. You mentioned the call center, having people call. We're still getting complaints about people calling in and not getting answers, so.
We have additional resources. We have two other ladies that we have assisting with those calls. And if they, if they're recording, if it is a phone call and they take that call, and if it's a voicemail, and I can tell you probably about maybe 5% at the most go to voicemail. And this is just me. The individuals that are assigned are people within the general area. They're not somewhere in Atlanta or New York or whatever. They're in this general vicinity, and I feel very confident with their abilities.
Well, we signed up for this. I expect to hear the complaint, but our staff is just getting overwhelmed with complaints. So we need some help resolving complaints.
Yes, sir.
But getting this service back to what it needs to be and what our citizens expect.
We understand. We respect what you're saying, and we couldn't agree with you more.
Mr. Council?
Mayor, Ms. Wells, we very much appreciate you coming, I guess, on the average about every three to four months, giving us updates. But just as the mayor said, this is getting to the point now where this sounds like a broken record, you know, that's being played over and over again. The only thing that we see in different is maybe two different faces that you're bringing with you each time. You know, so we don't have no sort of consistency.
Right.
I know you mentioned when you were speaking earlier about increasing driver accountability. It wasn't the drivers that we, me, the mayor, and city manager, I think, met with about three or four months ago. It was the management staff. And you all committed to doing something that you all, from a management standpoint, have not held up. You know, we asked you all to provide us on a monthly basis a report log of every call that have came in to the Waste Management. And to that, to this date, we have not yet received that. At least it hasn't been in our monthly report.
Okay, then I will follow up on that. I had to reformat two of them today, and I think the last one I reformatted was weekend in June 10th. So I'll find out where the report is for last week, or is that this week? That's this week. So yeah, so I'll find out where that last week's report is. But I know that we've got through June 10th, just because I had to change some formatting for them to be able to print that correctly. And part of that, respectfully, part of that commitment was that we would have more oversight. And so these two individuals are here, kind of proof positive that we definitely are going to have more oversight.
Ms. Louder?
Yes, ma'am. You know what? I will say this. He has been informed. Because the standard that we have, we're not at our standard that we want to be. So just as we appreciate your all's honesty, we're also honest with each other. Because you can't change unless you recognize where you are. So to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, regarding the limbs, if you all want to kind of give an update, I know we have an individual that they're working with. He is newer. And so my personal thought is, and I'm not the operator, but my personal thought is it's taken them a lot longer to collect, and that's what's causing some of the backlog. But I'll let them kind of shed some light on that.
Yes, coming up to speed on some of that, it is somewhat new folks and new assets learning routes. But that's where we've got to provide the accountability and the execution of that for our new people. And if it is new, falling behind, we've got to get some additional support to get and keep that called up. You know, we threw some additional assets at it, you know, a couple of months ago, got it all cleaned up, and then here we are again. So we've got to stay on top of that, the accountability and execution to the plan to keep it consistent.
And Tom, you did bring the point of, like, the heavy storms we've had. So when we start to get somebody to point, they need to be, they are set back by those events. And we'll, as we have done before, we'll bring in additional resources to help that person in their task and not just expect them to get better on their own. We understand that.
And these resources come from where? Existing employees in other areas or?
Both. We'll look internally at the local operation. We'll also look externally for assistance because both get us where we need to be as quickly as we can get there.
I think both you, us, and our community need to catch 22. In that if you're an employer, I can understand how difficult it is to get employees today. And you throw $20 an hour out there, $40, you know, it doesn't matter. They're not coming to work. I hate that that's there, and I'm glad that you've got these other resources to bring in. That's, to me, looks, at this point, the only way that we're going to at least get to a status quo of where we need to be until these other people get up to speed. What are you doing to, as far as retention?
So, well, I mean, retention for us starts with who we hire. And we're more selective than we have to be because, you know, if we lower our standards, then we have people that don't make it anyway. So that hurts us on the hiring side. But, you know, we have, as Marilyn mentioned, an extensive onboarding process, you know, designed to bring people in and train them and turn them into, you know, safe drivers. But then, you know, part of that is we have a defined 30, 60, 90-day on-the-job training program where our drivers are partnered with other employees, and also the management interaction at that time is designed to work with them. You know, we, you know, on other facets, we, of course, use our annual, you know, wage increases and merit increases as a show of where we are with people. This year, we, you know, the company had the largest wage increase in the history of my 28-year tenure. You know, and that was, you know, that was prior to the conditions we've seen deteriorate since those decisions were made back in January and February. You know, we also, from employee engagement events, from the small things, you know, to show appreciation, from whether it be a food truck, employee events, you know, different handouts and giveaways just to show appreciation. We also have started, and that'll be part of the role of our managers, is to have stay interviews to kind of intervene with our employees annually to see where they are. So we have a whole host of, retention is key because if we don't lose people, we don't stand here in front of you tonight. You know, we also are, you know, our office in Granite Quarry, we're about to, by the end of the year, make a significant investment in the site, which will have us install a compressed natural gas system and upgrade the shop to handle the maintenance on compressed natural gas. WM has a corporate policy of cutting the greenhouse gas emissions, and, you know, that will allow us to invest in newer equipment that is key to retention as well. As people, you know, drivers of the competition would prefer to be in a newer truck. So it goes across the scale of things we're looking at on a retention basis.
I would say it's two things in my mind. So one is you can throw money at folks. You can, and we did a significant increase in employees last year, and as Pat just mentioned, they approved. It was approved for a significant increase this year. The other way you do it is you have, you want to have a culture of a work family. And that's kind of all-encompassing what is, in our business, probably most important, is that each one is looking out for the other because we're all about that. And along with that means, you know, I've got your back kind of mentality. 10% of our workforce are military veterans, and so they totally understand that mentality. We actually unroll or unveiled a Your Tomorrow program last year in which we not only pay for the college education of our employees, first in the first request that the administrator had ever had, we also pay for the college education of their defendants. So I wish my children were not pretty much done with their college or out of school because that would have been a nice little bit. But so we have actually tried to find other avenues through people and the importance of people, through how do we support our people as far as, you know, pay and benefits. And then most important is that culture. And that's where, in my belief, having some managerial, more managerial oversight to create those stay reasons and stay conversations, we feel like it's going to have that culture that we need. And then it's just training, training our younger, newer employees to make sure that they understand, you know, safety is above all and that work family and customer service, you know, making sure that we're completing what we're supposed to complete.
Louder?
You may want to wait till the fall. It's hot and a little stinky right now, but can we, can we, can we do that? We'd have to ask, yeah. We'd have to ask and be sure, but maybe we could follow behind. I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to ride with you, Councilman Louder, when we could follow behind someone.
I appreciate what you said on that regard, but the other thing that I think is key that the mayor brought up is the communication process from our constituents who call you and the gap, or whatever the case may be, where they're not getting or we're not getting the response that we need. And as a result, our staff is catching a lot of grief. We've got to eliminate that.
And, you know, it's been brought up, you know, we've spoken a lot about drivers. We'll, we need continuity in this group as well because that breakdown hurts as much. Our drivers can only be as accountable as we can be with our drivers and holding them accountable. And that's where these team members come in, and that's kind of a turning point for this, too. So as dangerous and harmful as driver turnover and lack of drivers, we got to have.
Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been sitting here doing like this.
You just got to speak. She was waiting for it.
I've been waiting. What year are we in this current contract?
I believe when we enter in July, that'll be the fifth year.
Out of seven?
Correct.
So we've got two more years of this, and this sounds like a broken record, okay? It truly sounds, and I mean, it does. You know, for about the first 18, 22, 20 months, we could say it was COVID. You know, there's a lot of that. We could base it on that. Last week alone, yes, our. Last week alone, yes, our staff gets called, Martha Sue gets called. And worse than that, Martha Sue gets, her Facebook account gets blown up, not the city's, but mine. It's not yours or yours or yours, and it's not some of these folks. But if somebody's, and it's not so much trash as it is recycled. And I will tell you, for years and years and years, I was one of the folks that really has pushed recycling. There was a time that we had it, and then there was a time that we didn't have it, and now I'm glad we still have it. But when it doesn't get picked up, week after week after week, last week is a good example. The city did get a call from you all, and we did put it on our Facebook post, okay? That one part of the city didn't get picked up. And the post started clicking there, well, this is the part that never get, we always get missed. And two particularly places, and I get called out, okay? I don't want to get called out. I shouldn't be getting called out, this isn't me. So it seems like a broken record. But I think back to the issue that Mr. Townsend brought up about the reports from 1224. And it's crazy when I've given that number so many times, I mean, I just know the number, that we've not gotten any or not seen them. If that's part of the agreement for the communication, I think we've really got to get back to that. But it is a broken record. It truly is a broken record, particularly because of certain areas, okay, that just continue to be missed. Well, and it, I mean, it's, you know, that's right.
Ms. Louder.
No, she said you didn't need to be out there right now, because it's stinky.
Ms. Louder, what she said was, you can't ride in the truck, but they will be glad to, they would be glad to ride behind them. She said she would be glad to follow the truck and ride with you in the truck.
Yes, ma'am.
And her behalf.
It would, it would be my pleasure. Well, bottom line for us, we hold ourselves accountable. And so, we apologize that it has not been to the standard, but I can assure you, we want it to get to the standard more than you do. Well, they're here representing waste management, and so we deserve whatever you all want to tell us.
They're here to help fix the problem, if I didn't.
They are here to help fix it. And you don't know where you are until you hear it, so we appreciate that.
Further questions, Council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we look forward to getting those reports and see how things change.
Yes, ma'am.
Come soon.
We all are, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to unannounced delegations, I have one for Stormwater. And I want to say upfront, Stormwater is not on the agenda and not in the city's budget that we're discussing tonight, but we'll be glad to hear you if you want to, Billy Mills.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, Council members. I'm, I come with a, I have a question. It's May 21st, 22nd newspaper, and after we had the forums, there was a council meeting when we left. And I'm just reading this because this wasn't discussed while we were here. And this, all I know, all the record I have is what was in the paper, and I just want to make sure this was correct. It says, "Council removes stormwater fee from budget." And this is what happened. "Council approved a motion offered by Councilman Dexter Townsend and seconded by Councilman Bill Aldridge to remove the stormwater fee from the '22, '23 fiscal year budget, thus delaying the implementation of the program." "Council passed a separate motion offered by Mayor Pro team Martha Sue Hall and seconded by Councilwoman Martha Hughes to continue discussing the creation, discussing, discussing the creation of a new stormwater management plan." It goes on. And these are quotes, that Toby didn't write this, Chris Miller did. "What that does is makes us responsible and responsible for the continuation of discussion, again, discussion, lets people know we've listened to them, we know we got to do it. We'll give it to them no later than January 1st," Hall explained in her motion. And that's where, whenever we came and we met four times, that's what, that's what I read and we read. But this is some of the things that I'm asking. "This delay provides opportunity for the city council members to reach out to citizens and constituents and to look deeper into various elements of the stormwater bill." First of all, during the forums, we established that the consultants, W.K. Dixon, had performed very poorly in publicizing the stormwater forums. "We also asked the first night if W.K. Dixon would profit from the approval of the stormwater fee, if you remember, several of you were here, making sure that consultation proposal would be impartial." If you've got someone that's doing your consultation, that's giving you advice, you definitely would like for them to be impartial, I think. "We also confirmed that there's no specific strategies offered by W.K. Dixon other than creating a nine-person department at the cost of $2.5 million and updating and modernizing the city's infrastructure." There's not a town or city in the state of North Carolina that doesn't need infrastructure to be updated. So those were pretty simple. It's almost like, I think, one of the things you mentioned was kicking the can down the road. Simply to form a nine-member department at an annual cost of $2.5 million to Alamo taxpayers, making us the fourth highest in the state in a stormwater fee, overriding all the coastal where they have hurricanes in all the big cities. We're number, we'll be number four, because W.K. Dixon, and this is big, has a master plan. This is only the first phase. So when they said that we would not profit if y'all pass this, I kind of, this is only the first phase of paying W.K. Dixon, $427,000, half a million dollars, we paid them. Now you take that and add it on to the stormwater fee, we've already, you know, if we approve it, and we're going to continue their contract in the budget right now, if you've looked at it, it's continued in the budget, we're going to pay them another $200,000 from now until January. Y'all, that's $600,000 from the city of Alamo, and I'm thinking, is this a good, and anyway, look at the budget, we've gone through, and we've put a lot of research on this. Is this a solution for the flooding of the city of Alamo, to form a nine-member stormwater department? When hiring consultants and being familiar with actual sources of flooding, I think the number one priority should be, should know where the tributaries are in the city of Alamo. They didn't know, they didn't know the names of them. And, and I know probably the, you know, and I don't want it, they're not here and they can't defend herself, but why were, why weren't they not familiar with the names of the creeks? Why do they not know which way they run? Do you know Rock Creek runs north? It runs different than the other ones? How can you bestow reliable expert advice when you do not know the names of the main sources of flooding? That's my question. The city taxpayers have paid $400,000 this year alone, and additional $200,000 is in your budget right now for next year, it's a little bit less than that. Last point. We say that this is $11.50 per household. Alamo business owners are going to have to increase their charges. The YMCA fee's going to go up. Church congregations are going to struggle, because they've already got their budget made out, and we're going to hit them? A place like Centerview, a place like Centerview, their bill is going to go up, anywhere from $500 to $700 per month. Their congregation hasn't come back yet. We had several, well, we didn't have several, but we had pastors come, resurrection came, and the churches have big parking lots. If anything, if anybody was exempt, car dealerships will be forced to charge more for vehicles, my hospital bill's going to go up, my groceries are going to go up, because the consumer is going to receive whatever, you say, well, Walmart can pay it. Did you know that Walmart's monthly bill is going to go to $2,500 on the increase? That's per month, about $34,000 a year? Will they just eat that? I don't think so. I think they're going to pass it on to folks on fixed incomes, people that have retired, poor or low-income families. J.T. Russell, C.B. Crook, Walmart, Lowe's, they can afford this. You say, you look at, so they got plenty of money, they can afford this. But my Walmart and my Lowe's, and if I get my driveway paved, that price is going to be passed on to me. It's just like the price of gas. Spoke with Tyler at Chick-fil-A, he was going to come tonight, but he's busy. Do you, you have any idea what the light bill at Chick-fil-A is? This is a major, it's higher than the other ones that's in Charlotte. He said, Billy, my light bill is higher than just by every one of them in Charlotte. Seven to $8,000 a month, Tyler talked to him, asked him, called him, check up. He said, and they're going, he has two acres. By the way, if you ever want to know what two acres looks like, look at Chick-fil-A and their parking lot. That's two acres of land. He said, we've got exactly two acres of land. Will he be able to afford this? Yes, he will, he sure will. But you know what? My grandkid's kids meal is going up if you pass this fee. And I like to take my grandkids to Chick-fil-A.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Billy.
Moving into administrative reports, number seven, progress report for the Alamo Business Center, Ms. Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we've been reporting for the last several months, give you a monthly update, the second meeting of each month regarding the Alamo Business Center. And as we know, we're still in the early phases of construction. The general contractor is NJR Group. The erosion control basins and dishes are fully installed, sewer installation is beginning. I think everyone's all aware, and if you weren't, it's probably not surprising to know that they test drilled for four manholes and hit rock on each one of them. And of course, began blasting operations for the sewer line for the manhole construction, everything related to the sewer. The RCP pipe is still not in, it's been on the list since November, and they're hopeful that this will arrive in June, which when we first met, when we met with them, it was June 3rd, so have not heard whether it's in now or not, but they're hopeful for June. This is an industry-wide issue. Fortunately, we're early in the project, so that there are other things that they can maneuver around and keep going, and it's not a holdup, but at some point, it could possibly begin to affect the schedule. In terms of the city's electrical work, you know, the city and its own subcontractors are doing the electrical installation. The bids were received on the week of June 6th for the materials. The reason we have bid at this point is because, like we've seen on many other things, and have some other agenda items further down, lead times are the biggest issues in terms of getting the materials necessary to do a job. They're, the electrical engineer, Southeastern, is completing the design work, if they're not already complete. And as reported at the last meeting, we're looking at December or January end of this year, early 1st of 2023, to coordinate the electric installation within the park with the contractor, NJR. What we don't want to do is undo any work they've done or be in their way. Want to plan it out well enough in advance to be able to have the materials and work ready to go when it's most convenient in terms of the project and for all parties involved. So, that's the update on the status of the construction of the Business Center at this point, Mayor.
Questions? Number eight, departmental monthly reports is in your agenda, anyone have any questions? Number nine, ordinance 2237, creation of a social district. I think Ms. Almond has that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, thank you for having me this evening. Excuse me. You'll bear with me, I get on this agenda item. Okay, so, in February, I presented a PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to recap some highlights from that for you. Let's figure out how to open this file, if you'll bear with me. I'm clicking on open file, and it's not opening. Okay, I think I found it.
Go to the second one to try it, you know, try that one.
Owen's back there, too.
That's what it is, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so, just to give you a quick recap, this is a very hot topic amongst many communities across the state of North Carolina. So just to give you just a basic recap of social districts. Social districts are defined outdoor areas which a person may consume alcoholic beverages sold by a perma tea. Part of House Bill 781, bring business back to downtown. Social districts were added with the intent to increase foot traffic for businesses that have struggled since the beginning of the COVID pandemic. The bill empowers municipalities to allow people to buy and consume alcoholic beverages within a defined area. The bill does not allow downtown visitors to bring their own alcoholic beverages into the district. It also does not allow visitors to take a beverage from one drinking establishment into another bar, a restaurant that also serves alcohol. So we talked about how social district could benefit our downtown. There are several other cities in North Carolina that have passed social districts that are already seeing these benefits, attracting visitors, increasing overall foot traffic, giving restaurants and bars more outdoor space to accommodate those who still want to socially distance. It enhances activity in outdoor spaces and simplifies the rules of outdoor consumption in those spaces. And it serves as another marketing tool for downtown, as you see in Lansing, Michigan's marketing materials, they have social districts there. Enforcing a social district, you have signage at each of these social district boundaries, showing where you are entering and leaving the social district. The cups that you, the containers for social district beverages have to be a specific cup, have to be specifically labeled with specific verbiage, cannot be larger than a 16-ounce cup. And I've got a different map I'm going to share with you right now. I have a list of 12 cities now that have approved social districts across the state. Norwood is one of those, our neighbor just down the road. So, I have hosted a public input session, two of them on April 25th, and gathered input. I sent those comments, was a part of the agenda package. And also, May 4th, we followed up with a staff meeting, had representatives from Alamo Police Department, Public Utilities, Planning and Development to give feedback on their thoughts on implementation and what their role would be. Re searched other towns, I've paid a visit to Norwood, I've looked online at how some of the other cities are implementing, in an email thread with the other Main Street communities across North Carolina, and we've been in constant discussion about things that are and are not working for them. And so, I, from all of that feedback, I worked with our city attorney, Britt Birch, to create a draft of the ordinance, which if I understand correctly, is an update to the existing sidewalk ordinance to include the social district in addition to the consumption on sidewalks. And that was in the agenda packet as well. And so, I come to you this evening to see if you have had a chance to review the ordinance, if you have a question about the ordinance, and if you are wanting to approve the ordinance this evening. if you have a question about the ordinance, and if you are wanting to approve the ordinance this evening.
Ms. Almond, you said you was in communication with some of the other towns that have already implemented it?
Yes, sir.
And you all discussed some of the things that don't work for them? What are, what are some of those type things that don't work for them?
Honestly, from what I've heard from them, I've gotten very little to no negative feedback on any concerns, mostly just positive comments. The businesses have noticed more foot traffic. For those restaurants that formerly would have had a parameter that they had to keep people inside with beverages, they're able to expand. So if they have attractions such as live music outdoors, they have a larger footprint for people to be able to enjoy their beverage and watch and enjoy the live music that's happening in that outside space. Anywhere within the parameters of the social district. The exceptions, now, they are not allowed, and we do have a map with the parameters. And let me see, I may need some help again with this.
I think it's the first one.
Yes, thank you. So I'm going to open that file. Yes, so you can see, Ms. Louder, the map here has the social district boundaries. So there are some buildings and properties that you are not allowed to take beverages, such as public buildings, such as City Hall, courthouse, churches, where you are not allowed to take beverages. But you can see the overlay here. Some of them, it looks, some businesses requested that we add their business to be a part of the social district, which is why the, on Second Street, it goes as far north as it does and as far south as it does. We have a pretty widespread downtown. But yes, we, within those parameters is where we would want people to keep their beverages. They can. I don't envision people being in the road with the beverages. But unless they are crossing a street with a beverage, I would imagine they would stay on the sidewalks.
What are you proposing for a cutoff time in the evening?
So, and this was a decision when this, when I met with staff with the follow-up meeting. In the ordinance draft, it is, I know what it is, but I want to see it before I tell you. So it would be between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. And taking things into consideration, such as the brunch bill, our downtown restaurants have a very strong brunch business on the weekends, and they could benefit from those hours.
Further questions? Comment?
And I do have a couple of downtown business owners that I've invited that if you would like to hear some comments from them about how they would feel about having a social district in our downtown, I'll be happy to call them up.
Please.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. The thing is now, no businesses downtown stay open past 5:00.
Give your name and address for the record, please.
Joshua Hicks, High Point, North Carolina. No businesses stay open past 5:00. And if we have a social district and reasons why people will come downtown, then I'm hoping that they will stay open past 5:00 because no one can come shop after work with everything closed. We come down for the meeting, there's nothing open downtown except for my business. That's it. So a social district would help in that sense. But when the town has their wine festival, that gives people the reason to walk through town and shop. That will bring a lot of money to downtown. Or any festival that we have, it'll give us more reason to have more festivals if people have that reason to shop. And you're going to spend a little more money if you've had one drink. And you're not going to go out in the street and try to fight cars. I've been drunk one or two times in my life, and I don't ever go into the street. So it would, it's something that for Admiral to succeed, we should seriously consider it. And we need people downtown. The other side of town, there's thousands of people over there all the time. We need them downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a question for him?
Not for him. I guess my only, and I'm totally in favor of it, the way the ordinance is written. But my only concern, I'm just wondering, should we consider altering the time on Sundays to at the church hours? Or not? If, do y'all see an issue with?
Well, you know.
Considering we got so many.
Churches downtown.
Downtown district, you know.
If it wasn't for the brunch bill, I would agree with you, but we, we allowed it with that brunch bill.
We did take the brunch bill into consideration when we were scheduling the times.
It starts at 10:00.
Starts at 10:00 in the morning, is that brunch bill?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Hopefully, but maybe, I don't think we'll have an influx of people downtown on Sunday.
I move to. Yeah, I move to approve ordinance 2237 of a creation of a social district.
Second, by Councilmember drive. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Staff and. How soon can it be implemented? What's the time?
The ordinance says as soon as the ABC Commission approves it. That's what it said in the ordinance.
So Joy, do you have an idea of when it might be implemented? Yeah, Dexter just asked that, yeah.
There will be some next steps when I get, once I get a certified copy of the approved ordinance. I will need that to send to the North Carolina ABC Commission. There is an application based on my one-time use permits. I anticipate a four-to-six-week turnaround time on getting the permit back from them. And in the meantime, hosting orientation for businesses that want to participate. They will need to register with the city in order to participate. And so we've been doing some backend work, city staff and myself. So we are pushing to get that no later than late August as we do have a lot of outdoor events coming up in the fall that would benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving to our agenda adjustments. We're going to bring number 26 up to the current location. Ordinance 2234, approval of fiscal year 2223, city of Admiral budget.
Before, before we ever do that, can we go back to when Mr. Mills mentioned what was quoted in the newspaper? I think that, you know, Mr. Mills mentioned the motion to take stormwater out of the budget as was presented in May. And then I made another motion that said that we would continue to look forward. And I don't have it verbatim, but the motion was seconded. And as I remember correct, if I remember correctly, it was approved unanimously to continue through the study process. And if I'm looking at council members, do you all remember that being unanimous? That we would continue the study of it and not lose any time, not kick it down the road, but not to lose any time and just look at what we could do for implementation in January? Is that?
You didn't.
Yeah.
Extend your study and have them bring back some other options. I also need to request, ask Mr. Ferris or Ross or Ms. Birch. We proved an RFP for them to move forward with this. We, we could not stop that at this time since it's already been proved, can we?
And I will have to be reminded of what is included in the RFP. From my understanding from conference conversation, there will still be background work needed.
Right.
Back to council in January. I don't know why we would stop the RFP process to have background work to do to bring it forward.
So we've pretty much already committed to continuing with that. But then after we get to the rest of it and council adopts something, whoever the RFP is for anything forward would be a new RFP process, correct?
Any additional work outside of the scope of the current RFP.
Scope is correct, okay.
Just for clarification, that when we, I remember the motion, as Mayor Protem Hall just said, about continuing discussion for, now, I guess where I'm confused at, did we, was the motion to continue discussion for the, for a plan by January 1st or for implementation?
Implementation by January 1st. By August, we are to have.
We were shooting for August if they could get it together, yes.
Yeah, August so that staff would have the four or five months to get their work done, to be prepared to roll it out.
Plus, we needed the year ending so we could actually talk first trial also.
And was it January the 1st or is January of 2023? I thought it was just January of 23.
January 1st.
That might be.
Wow, January 1st.
That was council's vote. You will still have to vote at some point.
Yeah.
Whether you want to do anything.
Right, right.
I mean, that was the intent, but you will still have to do.
The intent, the intent was for us, the intent was for us not to completely throw it away. That we had done the work thus far, and that I didn't want us to wait till October to look back on it. I wanted us to stay the course and to continue with, with something. That was the intent. And if I remember correctly, it was a unanimous vote.
Right. Well, you know, if you look back at the dot matrix, everyone on this council put a dot. And I think there were six dots on that matrix that we wanted a stormwater system or plan in place. So, you know, we're elected to make hard decisions. This is going to be one of those hard decisions that we have to make as a council. So, you know, we need to walk the top. And that's what we said back when we did our planning and budgeting back in February. So we need to remember that.
And I think the other thing that Billy brought up was the dollar amount. None of us, I'm speaking for myself right now. I'm not comfortable with that, never have been comfortable with that. And I don't think this council, this is going to be, that's going to be a very ethical part of our discussion and our planning to move this thing forward. It's going to be, be high on my mind to, to make sure that we do everything we can to make this as palatable as possible to meet the need of what we're going to have to do ultimately.
And I'll say the same thing I said last time. I have no problem with adopting something by January 1, but I have, I have concerns about implementation. You have nonprofits, you have schools, you have churches. A lot of people have adopted their budgets already. I, if we adopt something by January, fine. I still think implementation should not come to July 1, but that will be council's decision.
And I think that was maybe not discussed, but in our minds, that, that we would have the plan together. And we can't implement it, you know, with a clap of the hand. It's going to take some time to do it, so.
Especially with what we heard, we need to contact all the businesses. We need to get all that information out there. We need to have more public hearings. So it's going to take some time to do all that.
I think one, one thing. We're not going to jump into this anytime real quick. And we didn't always, we don't always agree with what we got to do and how we got to get there. But we ultimately find a very good way to look after everybody that sits out there. And that's a promise.
Mr. Whitely, have a comment?
Well, you know, I think one thing maybe we didn't do well enough is the scope of the project, scope of the plan. Because you can't fix something until you know what it is that's wrong. So you've got to map and do all that first to you know what the worst part is. So that was, was my thinking when we decided to lay it, is look at the scope of it as far as continue the mapping, continue that. You know, unfortunately, you know, not fund the capital part of it yet.
Right.
And see what you need, and then fund that later. But determine what the most critical items are, and you got to, you got to map the system to find it.
Well, I have to say that I don't, speaking for myself, I don't think I comprehended what this fiscally would impact on this year's budget. I don't think any of us sitting up here totally understood when the city manager put his budget together based on what we said we wanted to do with stormwater. He did what we directed him. I don't think any of us understood the financial impact that was going to make on our budget for 2223. That was huge. And then when we decided to pull that back out, which is what we've done, that's had a huge impact, again, on what, on what's in this budget. And I'm going to tell you, I spent, I went through this budget, because city managers know, I went through it line by line this weekend.
As did I, Ms. Hughes. Because that's what I've done in the past.
Council, approval of the budget is on.
So I have a question, I have a few questions. The Assistant Fire Chief. So I know that Sean Oak, the former chief, had asked for one of those. For as long as I've been on council, he has wanted one. So I guess my question is, what has changed or occurred that today we now feel that we need to have an Assistant Fire Chief in place?
Sure, well, that's not something that Chief Burton can answer. So I'll take, I'll answer that. One is council's strategic plan. Also, we've all, we've always been very, we back up even further. We've tried to operate as efficiently as possible, and we've done that for a while. But as everyone, I think there's been several comments tonight about what we do as a city. It's growing and growing and growing, and we're seeing a lot of positive things taking place. But there's a, there's a, there is a limit to, like everything else, as to how much you can do before you start needing more resources. So with that, we've also coincided with council being the item number one on the strategic plan, which is supporting a plan and process for enhanced staff capacity and organizational capacity to do what's asked of us. At the same time, we're also in a different financial situation than probably where we were a few years ago. We've seen some growth, we've seen, we've been creative in areas. Our city's beginning to change, so we have the ability at the same time to do some of these things now that we did not have in the past. And that's the answer to that.
And, and I'll just add, add this also. Back when Chief Oak was here, we did not have a public information officer. We did not have Assistant Director of Public Housing. We got our Assistant Director of Parts and Recreation. We got our Assistant Finance Director. Just to go on and on, I think we about got Assistant Director or position in every department, to my knowledge, except the fire department, you know. And I, I keep hearing this come up, but we did not have so many proposed subdivisions and things of that nature on the horizon in the city limits of Alamo as we did when Chief Oak was here. So I think it's justified that we have an Assistant Fire Chief.
So, so Michael, with regards generally, when we add, because I know there's a couple other positions being added. I think there's one in IT that you had mentioned to me, and then I think there's one in finance. What, what process, how, how do we know when we need to add somebody? Or how, what, what is your process or what is the department head's process to come to you and say, hey, I need a new person? What do we do? Or how do you justify that?
I mean, it's, we get requests for several positions every year, especially this year, again.
Right.
Based on, based on council's direction of staff capacity. Where we tried to focus this year was primarily on those services that serve across the organization or within the department. So for example, in the last several years, we've added, I say more external-facing positions. We've added some in, in planning in the past. We've added some frontline fire personnel. Council's added some positions. So we've added those, but this year was really a focus on being able to keep up with and support everything that we do. So there was a little bit more focus this year on some of the internal support, which goes across departmental lines for the most part. Or again, in this case of, say, the position that's in the utilities fund to support the AMI implementation, the outage management. Of course, that doesn't go necessarily across departmental lines, but it's serving something that's serving many departments. I'm sorry, serving broadly across that larger department. And the same thing that goes with the Assistant Fire Chief.
So I guess, so for IT, I mean, how, what, how do we know when it's time to add a person? What, is there a measurement or what, what do we do? What's performed to say, okay, it's time to add that person? I guess that's kind of what I'm, I guess maybe I'm not, does that make sense?
Right. Right now, we don't have any, any sort of large benchmarking study. You know, the, there was a benchmarking study at the UNCC School of Government. That's closed, the director's retiring. So a lot of it is just like when council felt like we needed to. So, a lot of it is just like when council felt like we needed a city attorney, we need a public information officer. You know, a lot of us here are in the positions to try to make determinations as to how best to support the overall organization in terms of the demand on the department, the need, any sort of, if there's delays or backlogs or things that can help improve efficiencies in other areas, not just within that department, but again, those efficiencies and personnel impact the efficiencies and abilities of others to do their jobs.
Okay, I had one other question. You had listed on here, and I just didn't find it in the, in the budget. It's with regards to our asphalt of the streets division, I guess. So, you had listed here, the citywide street rehabilitation and preservation is increasing from 400,000 to 625. I just didn't, where's the 625?
It's in a combination of the general fund, street division. I don't have the line amount for me, but there's also an amount in the POW bill.
Okay.
So, it's the combination of the two. So, the POW bill allocation to the city, about three things are happening. On the general fund side, we are increasing the amount we're putting toward preservation and maintenance.
Okay.
If I recall right, it's about $50,000 increasing on that side. On the POW bill side, that's where the remainder of the increase is. Part of that increase is due to additional POW bill funds coming into us this year from the state. So, you've heard me say in the past that, say, in the current fiscal year, our POW bill allocation is probably equivalent to where we receive funds, the amount of funds we received in 2009, 2010.
Right.
That has finally increased now, so there is an increase that we're receiving. At the same time, we're also increasing, increasing our POW bill retained earnings appropriation. So, their equivalent of fund balance, the, those funds can only be, have to be utilized within a certain period of time. And so, there was a request as part of the budget proposal to increase the fund balance retained earnings appropriation in POW bills. So, all those things, plus what we typically do every year, provided for the 625.
So, I'm not, as a person looking at the numbers, I'm not going to see the 625.
You're not going to see a 625.
It's going to be a culmination of.
That's correct.
Okay.
In the POW bill and general fund.
Okay, all right. I'm trying to look here real quick at my notes. And you had mentioned this in the email me, in the email you sent me today. You know, one thing I know that we had talked about was parks and recs, and I, parks and rec. I think in parks, I was looking back, you know, and I know everybody wants, everybody's got things they need to have. I think that was one department, though, that, and I think you had mentioned in your email to me today that they had, we have been putting more money in there, and you have made that a focus too. I just noticed that we, this year's budget, it appeared, if I recall correctly, was less than what we had done, I think, in 2020, 2021, maybe.
That, that could be possible. I think in that communication, I mentioned that in the last six or seven, I remember what the number was.
Right.
I sent to you, in the last six or seven budgets, the Parks Recreation Budget has increased by 48%. Now, I can't, two years ago, I think you said 2020 or so.
I think, isn't that the one we have in here?
1.283 is actual 2021.
Yeah, there could, I, it's hard for me to recall.
I know.
There could have been, I can tell you that that may have been, I don't want to say it with certainty, but that could have been the year that we received some funding for, outside funding for the basketball court and Waddell Center. That could have been the year, I think, we appropriated a large chunk of fund balance to replace, is it replace the windows? We did some HVAC work also, so there was one-time appropriations for capital improvements that could have impacted that annual figure that was not. So, if you saw a figure, it could be possible if you saw a figure two years ago that was significantly larger is because there were significant capital improvements that were funded through the appropriation of fund balance that weren't recurring expenditures before or since.
And I just, I think, I just want to, I guess, for the record, is that for us, and I think we've discussed this in our budgeting, is that our parks is really going to become very, very important in these coming years as these new developments come in. This is where the families are going to come. This is where we need to continue, I think, to focus on some of our resources. And, you know, I, I don't want to lose sight of that. And I know, you know, we've got a lot of things going on, we have a lot of demands and a lot of needs. And so, I just, I guess, I just want to make a point to say is that, you know, we, we are not funding the parks this year as we did in 2021. I know we've got a lot of things we've got to do. A lot was impacted by stormwater. I don't think until you look at this budget, line by line, can you understand what that did? And that leads me into the question of, and I don't know if this is the spot to ask it, but we've, we've paid WK Dixon an X of 427,000, okay? What happens to the rest of the money we owe them? How do, how are we going to pay that? Do we, when do we pay that?
What, what we owe them for what has been spent to date is actually the items that are contained in new business 28 and 29.
So, we'll talk, let's talk about it then.
But anything, I think, just if I might.
Yes.
So, what about, and I think, Ronny, you just asked. Britt, what about the contract, I mean, the contract and if it, for longer? And if it was, you know, total, I think, is a, that, that's the $192,000 in that next one. But what about anything moving forward? Is that, Martha?
Yeah, I mean, that's. Ye- yes, I'm, I'm asking about, we, we signed a contract with them, we've paid them a portion. We're going to pay them a little bit more here in this fiscal year. My question is, where's the money coming for the rest of the money we owe them? Because it was going to be paid out of stormwater. We don't have stormwater, but you still got to pay, you still got to pay these people. We're talking 600 and some thousand. So, I, I don't, I don't know how much more money is in that fund, but it's got to be, we have got to be getting down to the bottom of the piggy bank. So, that, I think that's why I'm real concerned about some of the, of the adding of the positions. I understand, Michael, what you're saying. I just think, you know, we've got a lot going on and a lot of money going out, and we don't have a lot coming in.
Right, and that's why, that's, I mean, jumping ahead to number 28 as it relates to the stormwater. When the budget was established for stormwater, the staff that presented it, it was clear that what would be paid for out of the general fund was the analysis and assessment is, should there be a program?
Right.
Now, there were some decisions made and commitments and that moved along all the way to May 18 with councils, you know, we had to prepare for the possibility of a program being in place by July 1. So, that moves past the analysis and assessment of the program into some implementation activities. And that's just the path it went down.
Right.
So, what would have happened, those activities, of course, we have to, no matter what, have money in the fund by the end of the fiscal year. But what would have happened was if there was a stormwater program of any kind, that whatever activities were beyond assessment and analysis, we'd have a revenue source.
Correct.
To pay for them. So, when council said, well, let's hang on, let's not implement July, something July 1, that means there was no revenue source to now pay for some of these activities that had to be done to prepare for that that was beyond the 427 that the general fund had committed.
And I want to say right here, I don't know if y'all, did y'all know, did you understand that when we said, okay, you know what, let's hold off for a second here, let, let's wait. I had, I mean, I didn't know that, or I had no understanding. I personally did not have the understanding that we still had a 600 and some thousand dollar, 600 plus that had to be paid, but it was going to be paid out of stormwater when the manager had it in here, and then we took it out. Or we, you still got to pay it.
Yeah, and just to, just to clarify.
Right.
Is the amount that was going to be, that could have been paid for by stormwater was that above the 427 in the original budget with the assessment and analysis? Once we move to preparing for implementation, that's preparing for a program, and that's when there are revenues, so.
Correct, to pay for that.
So, the 427 was out of the general fund, but now that we don't have the revenue, that has to come from somewhere, so.
And that's the part that I don't know if every person on this council understood that that was, you know, we make decisions, oh, well, you know what, let's hold off on that. We were listening to the folks, I think we needed to hear from them. But we also needed to understand the financial impact.
Right.
That that was having to his budget, to our budget, to what we have to talk to these folks out. And that has been huge for what he's had to go back in and back, back out. And now we're having to, now we got to figure this out.
Right.
And that's huge, that's a lot of money, folks, that's a lot of money.
Right, so there's still an opportunity, if council wants to take it, if there is a stormwater program implemented, the part that has gone beyond the analysis and has moved into implementation, when the revenue does come in, that can be reimbursed at a general fund.
Right.
Right now, as we get to year end.
Right.
There's a, you know, there's, there's a, there's a budget that has to be balanced with revenue.
Correct.
And so, one way or the other, wherever it comes from, no matter what happens in the future and that philosophy, that has to take place.
But I think for me, as a council member, I'm just sharing that I personally did not understand or get the whole financial impact of what us sitting down there the other night when we said, no, let's hold off on, on it. And I'm not saying that was a bad decision, I'm saying the financial impact that it's had on our budget has been huge.
And we're about to approve another 192.
Okay, those were my questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's talk.
And I did, I went back through the budget to the highlighted, if you will, or the bolded totals. That's what I looked at, and I didn't look at the, the enterprise as much as I looked at the general fund. Enterprise is almost a wash. We bring in, we spend, we put a little bit in, in fund balance for those. But I was looking at the general fund, and this is just a question. And, and it may be that all the other six members up here know exactly where it came from, but I would say that they don't. Whenever you have on certain, certain budgets, an allocation for such and such. It's my understanding, or what I believe is, is that that is coming from other funds. For instance, enterprise funds. Is that right, Michael? For instance, I've got up, and I'm not picking on David, PIO, but that's just the page I've written my notes on. On that particular one, there is a allocation for the PIO of about $60,000. And if you look at the general fund, it's only $39,000. But you look at how much that actually is costing, it's about 100. And the allocation for that, of that 60, is from enterprise funds, is that correct?
That's correct. And the reason we show it that way, like fleet maintenance, IT, PIO, city attorney's office, and some others, is so that you can look and see the cost of those operations. Now, let's just use PIO, we'll just stick with that. The reason the money comes in from the other funds is because that person is the PIO for all the operations. As we saw the other night, a lot of time was spent on electrical issues. The city attorney is the city attorney for, across the board. So, you can look at it, see the full cost, but then those other funds are paying for their share of the service.
And I just bring that to the attention of folks, anybody that may have gotten a copy of this one anywhere or looked at the numbers, because some people might not understand that, they may just see the bolded of what the bolded is and not know where the other's coming from. And I guess over many years, I kept hearing folks, particularly at Electric City, saying you cannot transfer fund, you cannot co-mingle funds, you can't not do that. But we are able to do that in this particular case as we are allocating percentages, is that correct?
Right, because it's, it's not, I think what the, like, again, electric transfers has been the biggest statewide issue.
Right.
It's not a transfer just because.
Right.
When you do it that way, that is showing a payment and their share of a service. So, if we didn't have some of these services, say, fleet maintenance or a city attorney, when they needed those services, you know, the electric fund would have to go find those services.
Right.
So, they're actually paying for a service they receive.
Okay, and the last thing I would just say is that one of the things that I looked at, and I, I hope that members of council have looked at this as well, is I went back and looked at actual from 2021. And 2021, when you think about it, that was not, that was not COVID-1. COVID-1 was actually 1920. So, 2021 was actually the first full year of COVID. 2122 is what we're in right now. I looked at what actual was, what estimated final was for this current year, what proposed was for next year, and what recommended was. And it, and I'm sure, I'm sure that everybody wanted more than had this wonderful grand idea of what they wanted. But it really looks like that some departments were really given a lot, a percentage wise, across when others were not. And I just, I, I guess, when I was looking at that, particularly then comparing it to pie charts, this was a different year, different way of doing the budget this year, and I guess I like going through numbers, because that's something I spent a lot of time on this past whole week. Just making that comment that it really looked like some folks got a lot more than others.
And that, that happens year to year based on the need, and then also you can have some debt service that comes in. Again, we're talking about Parks Recreation. Take, for example, the fire department. The current year, there's the revenue coming in for a fire truck and the expense going out, the full expense. The police department, I don't think recently had the financing of the building added. So, it can be a fairly high year because of the debt proceeds coming in and out. We don't have as much debt coming online this year. So, in the overall budget, right there, it could be a significant difference when you're talking about a $900,000, million dollar fire truck. This year, we just amended the landfill budget to add a million dollar compactor. When you see the budget next year, it might be a million dollars less because the debt proceeds aren't, aren't coming in.
Well, last two comments are, number one, I'm tickled that we've got the debt scheduled, printed out, number of where we are and when we're going to get things paid off. Number two, I see within the body of, speaking of fire, that we do have a safer grant for three to six firefighters. And that, if I understood it correctly, small print, that if we get this, it will be paid for 100% for three years. Is that correct, Michael?
It'll be paid for, for a period of three years. Is it 100% chief for three years?
I think that, I saw that. Okay, but we're, we've asked for three to six, and we have no idea of what we'll get, right?
We will put in six firefighters, so that will allocate to, to.
Right. Right. Well, I just know that in, Michael, in your notes, it said three to six firefighters.
We had put, we had put in for three this year, and about the time we, in the current fiscal year that we did not receive, so Chief Bruton is working with some folks to rework the grant. Right about the time we were putting together some budget notes, because it's, it's not running through the budget because we're applying for the grant, just wanted to let everyone know that's the strategy. We really got to the point of thinking, well, if we're going to get a grant, let's, let's go ahead and apply for the, the six, which gives us the ideal number.
Per shift.
Each, each position and a fire scene per shift. And if we get six, great, then we've got there all in one.
Right.
Jump. If we get three, we're still, you know, improved from where we had been.
So, I guess my question is, if we get three through the grant, do we have budget money for three or what?
No, we didn't, no, it's different than the, than the current, the current fiscal year.
Right.
Instead, if we got the grant, we would have the three through the grant. If we did not, we would still add the three.
Okay.
This is not occurring this year.
Okay.
It is, we're shooting for the three or the six.
Okay.
And we don't have budgeted for any additional at this time. But we added the three, we just, you know, added the three in the current year.
Okay, and is that federal fiscal year beginning October, or is that something we just wait till we hear?
I'm not sure, it seems, I recall summer or fall is the notification period, chief.
The last two years have been delayed due to not having years to identify and follow. So, I'm not sure when it's going to open. When it does open, will be ready for it, and it will stay open for a period of six months.
Thank you. Further questions, counsel, comment? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved on this 2234.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Whitley, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries 52. Moving back to the consent agenda. Number 10, Resolution 2220 to adopt electric rates for fiscal year 2223. Resolution 2221 to schedule a public hearing for partial payment of unity drive.
Partial abandonment.
Abandonment, excuse me, of unity drive. Resolution 2222 to adopt water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2223. Resolution 2222 to adopt water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2223. Resolution 2239, ordinance amending the alleyway project budget. Number 15, ordinance 2240 to establish a project budget for an I and I phase three. Number 16, consider approval of a three-year contract with retail strategies. Number 17, report of sale of surplus property 2122. Number 18, consider approval of Alamo Business Center electric material bid 2209. Number 20, consider road closure, nope, we're going, we're going to delay, number 21, consider road closures for Alamo Marl Christmas Parade. Number 22, consider road closures for Alamo Christmas Open House. Number 23, consider road closures for Alamo Marl Fall Festival. Number 24, consider road closure request for autumn extravaganza. And number 25, consider road closure request for Forest Hills Independence Day Parade.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving back to number 14, resolution 2223 to approve the cost of living adjustment for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Reason I pulled that, the very first item on the salary chart, one and two are reversed. Council, remember last year, we corrected this, but that was a saved copy in the budget and in their information, and it didn't get changed on there this year. All it is, is to change, reverse the first two items, one and two. So move. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 19, consider approval of chemical bid 2210. Jay, I think it's coming forward with that one.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Uh, just a small issue with the formal bid of the chemical bid for the utilities department. Uh, a couple of days after the agenda item was submitted into your agenda, a vendor reached out and said that they, uh, put the wrong quote in for the hydrofluorosilic acid, and, uh, they quoted it for wet tons when we asked for dry tons. So I'm just asking council to take out that specific item, uh, the 22 dry tons of liquid H F S, and approve the rest of the chemical bid.
It's that, you're going to have a substitute, or you're just not going to have one?
Uh, we're going to take it out, and then we're going to separately informally bid it, since it'll come under 90,000 separately.
So, question.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is in the budget that we just approved. Isn't that right? This was in the budget that we just approved. Is that right?
Is that in the current budget or new?
Looks like to me it's.
New budget. For the new.
You'll, you'll break the purchase after July 1. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah. It'll be new fiscal.
Move approved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve with that, eliminating that one item.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, item number 20, consider road request for Falcon Street Fest. It mentions in there about, uh, the, the fees, but Pfeiffer University is a nonprofit. Let the council where you want to give that, waive those fees or not.
Move approve, waiving the fee.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 27, consider commitment to budget amendment fiscal year 2223 for Electric Cities group purchase of transformers. Mr. Ferris, you want to handle that, or is Jay chemical?
Sure. Uh, I'll introduce somewhat, and then, uh, Mr. Boils will cover some other detail. But this is something I made council aware of probably, uh, two weeks or so ago, uh, that they would be coming forward, and the issue that we are confronted with. Um, and then you see the information in the agenda package, which is, uh, centers around the difficulty in lead time in acquiring, uh, pad mount transformers, what used to be a 68-week lead time, sort of essentially purchased as they're needed, has, uh, increased about 130 weeks. In fact.
130 weeks? 130 weeks?
Hundred.
Oh, we're at, we're at 102 weeks.
God.
So it has dramatically increased. Um, so, um, there, even having difficulty with a typical order for a jurisdiction or an order from any organization of the size that we would typically make, even getting responses. So, uh, there was a joint purchase arrangement through Electric Cities on behalf of all members. Um, it was a $9 million bid, trying to get a, a better price, get transformers in for its members, and also get the attention of transformer companies to, uh, at least bid something because, uh, development and growth has come to a halt without these transformers. And there was, uh, one bid for, there was only one bid received for new transformers. There was a bid for refurbished transformers. Um, but, uh, Electric Cities, uh, has bid those on behalf, and Mr. Boils has a, uh, recommendation, uh, to make to council regarding moving forward with the purchase of those transformers to meet our needs for the foreseeable future and help address the supply chain, uh, issue that we're facing.
So basically, just to echo what Michael said, um, we are up against this wall with, uh, suppliers not being able to fulfill our needs separately. Uh, so this is why Electric Cities has addressed this issue through a group, a group purchasing plan. Um, we are currently requesting 250, uh, 50 KV transformers, pad mounted transformers. Uh, the bid came back in at $7,605 per unit. Uh, so we are requesting that city council approve or have a commitment to approve a budget amendment in the new fiscal year, uh, for roughly $1.9 million.
Questions?
So, I, I, I know we got to do it. Okay? That's not the fight. Okay? I'm just asking a procedural thing right now. Okay? Is there procedurally why we would, and I'm not asking you, okay? I'm just asking who somebody can answer this. First, I know it's not, we won't do anything until, until after July 1. Just let me finish, Charlie. I'm asking probably Michael. Um, probably, Michael, why is it that we would approve a budget and then go ahead and prove a budget amendment in a budget? Does that make any sense? It looks like to me if we know to, if we know going in right now, that we would have done something, and I, and I'm just, that's just a procedural thing.
I, I understand the question completely. At, at some point, you know, the budget development has to, you know, stop so that we can get it approved. Uh, these bids were only, uh, made available just two weeks ago, wasn't it, Jay?
That's correct. And they actually were requesting the purchase order to be made on June 20th.
Right.
Uh, several, several municipalities had issues with that, uh, from a fiscal perspective.
Right.
So we all got together and we asked for an extension to go into the new fiscal year. So now they're due, I believe, July 8. So, but we have to provide our answer to them by the 20th today. So.
Power in numbers because you're doing it together.
Right.
But, and some people couldn't do it before June 30th.
Right. So the, the reason we're coming to you right now before the new fiscal year is to go ahead and lock in that commitment so that we are able to issue that purchase order into the new fiscal year.
And with, and with the draft budget, didn't also want to make a change tonight to show that, uh, and presume that council was going to approve it. I mean, we felt fairly confident that it's something we're going to have to do. And transformers, we're going to be purchasing one way or the other anyway. But again, at some point, the budget development has to stop. And then this also, uh, comes out of the retained earnings of the electric fund. So nothing in the current electric budget that was just approved tonight is drafted, changes other than there's a retained earning revenue moving in to match the expenditure going out. So didn't want to alter the budget though, tonight, and make that assumption. If that didn't work, then we've got another issue to deal with.
Okay.
So it would have been ideal had there been, um, more time for us to decide. But as Jay said, they, they do need the decision. And so here we are.
It's 1.9.
That's correct.
We're still 100 weeks out.
We're still 100 weeks out.
Yeah, even with that bulk purchasing power, it's 100 weeks out, that thing.
It, it, 1.9, y'all. And the funny thing is, I wonder how many transformers we, that we used over the weekend. I mean, you know, it's just like.
We blew a lot of them.
Well, so the, these are pad mounted transformers. Usually your pole mounts are the ones that always get damaged during weather events. Um, the pad mounts are mainly for underground services.
Okay.
And it's basically all the development that nationally is going on right now, is, is why the supply chains are so affected in this regard. So really, this purchase is to address new development.
Right.
That's good to know.
Yeah. And we would have been purchasing along the way as needed, as they were ready. But we don't have that luxury now. So again, I think it's, it's transformers that we're going to be purchasing. We would just not have made a bulk purchase like this. But this is our only chance to get pad mounted transformers, period.
And pad mounts do get affected in motor vehicle accidents and, you know, end of service life and stuff like that. So it's not all for, you know, just development. But, um, and to help ease the minds, like Michael had mentioned, we have the, the rebate that we received from N C, N P A 1. And this is kind of working perfectly out where we still have 180-day operating reserve balance even after this purchase. So we're, we're still in a, a very healthy position even after this purchase, if it were to be committed to.
I'll entertain a motion.
Sub move.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to approve, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, will you pull the cursor down on that, on that one up there? Just purl it down on the side. So thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 28, ordinance 2238, amending the operating budget for fiscal year 2122. I think we've had a lengthy discussion on that already. Mr. Ferris, you have your further?
Yeah, just got a, yes, I, I do. Uh, just let me add a little bit to it. So we, we've discussed the reasoning and, and what needs to happen so that we, uh, have appropriate amount of funds in the, uh, uh, project budget at year end. Um, also, um, what is part of this proposal, uh, we need to do a couple of things. One is, I think, uh, the public works director, uh, has some dates for possible, uh, potential dates for meetings for, uh, to continue the evaluation of the stormwater program. But just, I want to make clear too that what is, what I'm recommending is that anything that is post, uh, anything that's more than evaluation of where we go from here, stops right now. Uh, so in terms of other studies and preparing for implementation, uh, that would, that would continue to add to the tally without the revenue to match it. It doesn't mean we're not going to do it. But what we, what we want to get is where that, when there is a revenue established in a program and a direction and a program to be implemented, then we make the moves to then increase the project budget to include the, the expenses of those post-assessment phases, because they will then match up to a program that has been approved by this body. So we don't get into, um, I don't, again, not wanting to speak for council, we, I might have an idea of where it's winding up, but don't want to make any assumptions. So don't want to continue to prepare for implementation if something comes along and council changes the mind, changes direction, delays it, you know, further, then there's not a revenue to match it up, and then we're back taking out the general fund. Only make those activities when there's a revenue to match it.
And I think that's important for us to hear, is that if we don't get revenue to come in, that's coming out of general fund.
That is correct.
Right. And so we need to be cognizant of that as we move forward, that if we don't have stormwater coming in, that money's coming out of general fund.
Right. So it's pay the bills we have now, but then also, as council has asked, what's it going to cost for them to, uh, change direction, come back in, further outreach, uh, further, um, public engagement, evaluating possible fees, program activities. That's what's been asked right now. So let's put a pause on anything beyond that. It doesn't mean it's being stopped. When those decisions are made to go beyond that, and that's formalized, then we can go beyond that with the expenditures as well. So one, number 28, uh, amends the operating budget to move money from, uh, general fund retained earnings, fund balance, to the project. Ordinance 2241 then moves it into the project budget to pay the bills that we have now, and to have sufficient amounts with what we know right now to continue to study the direction of, and the, of the program and the fees, and anything that's needed to consider a plan.
So item number 28, I got really, when I was looking through this, it appeared to me that within the, in item number 28, there is a memo that really talks about item number 29. Is that right? Because it, I, I, I mean, I, it really does.
They're, 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 they're related. You have to move the money out of the general fund into the project. So you amend the general fund, and then you move the project budget.
But that, that stormwater memo that's in item number 28 really affects, well, it affects both of them.
That's correct.
But it affects what we've already, what we've already spent.
That's correct.
Through the end of June. I think what Martha was getting to, Martha, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but what I heard you say was, what are we going to do after that? Anything we spend in all, I mean, July or August? And that's what you were just talking about.
Right. So we're, we're paying what we've spent to this point, but there's also amends the budget to appropriate additional funds to continue to study and analyze which direction you all want to go now beyond. So that covers that activity. So if you all were to make a decision and say on, uh, such and such a date, we're going to set a fee and provide this level of services and establish project budget, then we know council's made a final decision. Then we have a dedicated revenue source that can then match up and start funding the activities beyond that. And the amount of the activities we do depends on, and the amount they cost depends on the service level and funding level that council establishes.
I will say this, this memo, I don't, I don't know, Ross, you, this was very well, this to me, I don't know about y'all, but this, this, just put it in black and white for me. The numbers, what we've done, it was a good recap, um, for me to understand where we are on stormwater. So.
There, there was a, there was a combination effort of, uh, the public works director and myself, and even, even, even David Pfath, our public information officer, on, on some of the wording.
This keeps it simple.
Right.
And so this was very good.
Counsel, what do you want to do with ordinance 2238?
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve. Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 29, ordinance 2241.
Mayor, one second. While we're on this topic, can I throw some dates out so we can progress with this, please, and stay on track?
Please, yes.
I did talk with our consultants today. Um, we have some dates available, uh, for work sessions to talk about stormwater and the reevaluation process. And I would just like to try to get a consensus with everybody who would be available. June the 29th, or June the 30th, July the 13th, or July the 14th.
Hang tight. Or how many do we, are we looking for? Are we looking, one night you think?
I think it depends on you all and how.
Thanks, Ross.
The information y'all need to make a decision. Um, these are just the available dates. And then it's going to push down into the week of July the 25th.
What was the second two?
13 and 14.
June the 29th and June the 30th, and July the 13th and July the 14th.
Mr. Ferris will not be here the two in June. I will not be here the two in July. I won't be here the two in June.
So, Ross, what's the, what's the last one? July 25th?
The week of July 25th.
The whole week?
There was some availability through that whole.
What, what are those weeks? Because it sounds like those other two.
I don't have my calendar.
I've got, I've, I mean, Monday night is the 25th.
So what, what's council, what's?
Well, it sounds like to me that those first two opportunities either.
Are not going to work. So we got to go July 25th through the 29th or 20th.
So we are meeting tomorrow night. I would propose that everybody have their, and that we have those dates, because it looks like to me those first two aren't going to work, that we look at doing it that week of the 25th. Is everybody?
About July 25th? Does anybody know of any conflicts with July 25th?
Well, you're not sure that that date, just that week?
Any, any day of that week.
Oh, any day of that week.
Does everybody get on July 25th?
Yeah.
Why don't we hold?
What about the rest of the week, Chris? I know you're out. Any of that week?
I don't think any of that week.
You're not available any of that week?
I'll have to see. I don't think so. I'm here.
That's crazy. Well, I'm, I'm, to count, uh, pro temp halls, I think we, everybody look at your calendar tomorrow night, we're, we're going to have to get a date on the calendar. So.
So Ronnie, you're gone, you're not available the June dates. Is that right?
No, the July dates. Mr. Ferris is gone.
Ferris is not the June dates.
Okay, everybody look, we'll talk about tomorrow night.
Yeah, I can ask some questions. Okay.
All right. On this, July 25th.
I think there's a date wrong on this ordinance. 2241?
All right, ordinance 2241, amending the stormwater master project phase, plan phase one.
I believe in the section one, it should be January of 2023. Someone can correct me or confirm that, please?
I think that's correct, because I think I made that note, too. I think that's correct, because I think I made that note too.
January of 2023.
You just need to look at it.
That is correct.
Yeah. Thank you, Martha, because I meant to mention that.
We can approve it if counsel wishes.
Move approval.
With the correction.
With the correction date.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes to approve 2241 with the date correction. Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
So we're looking tomorrow night then to nail down that week of the 25th.
Yeah. Number 30, consider appointments to the ADDC Board of Directors. You have two names in front of you, Tanya Judge and Connie Josie.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 31, consider appointments to the boards and commissions, planning and zoning. Michelle Cummings is interested in reappointment. Tim Scott is interested in reappointment. Motion by Councilmember Dry to reappoint those two. Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Shank is not interested, so we will need to find someone.
Is there anyone on the?
Not on the list.
That is absolutely crazy.
You would notice that Mr. Ferris has put that, or David has put that.
Oh, on Facebook, I saw that.
Several times. So maybe we can get somebody interested in some positions. Historic Resources Commission, Mr. Bramlett, Chris Bramlett's interested in reappointment. Anthony Purnell is interested in reappointment. And John Williams is interested in reappointment. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Pre-commission, Mr. Burr is not interested in reappointment, so we need, have a vacancy on that. We need to find someone.
Is that also on social media?
All the boards are.
All the boards are.
Yeah. Okay, come around the table. Ms. Louder, you have anything? Mr. Aldridge?
Uh, no.
Well, well, hold on just a minute. Hold on, I got one more add-on before that. Mr. Scott, come on up front. Have a presentation regarding annual plan and five-year plan for Department of Public Housing.
All right. City Council, Mr. Mayor, my goal is to provide you with the changes to the admissions and continued occupancy policy, which is ACOB. The HUD obligation for the capital fund for fiscal year 2222, 23 is $724,484. Excuse me. And that is the purpose of assisting the PHA in carrying out capital management activities and existing housing projects in order to ensure that such projects continue to be available to serve low-income families. Two of the, as far as the focus for the $724,000 forecasted is to address the collapsed sewer pipes in 22 of our units. RFQs for five architects who have been, who are HUD-qualified architects should be in my office by June the 28th of, by 5:00 PM. The admissions and continued occupancy plan for changes is an overview of the revised ACOB to include eviction of tenant on the second late payment of rent, which basically is described in the administrative plan changes and the administrative plan changes for section eight as well, which entails tenants will not be afforded, will be afforded one opportunity to pay rent late during the term of their current lease. After one late payment of rent, a tenant's lease will be terminated on the second occasion of the late rent payment. All of this is in direction towards self-sufficiency for residents.
Mr. Scott, is that something from HUD? That, I just seem to be very strict, is what I'm asking.
That is something from HUD in.
HUD says they can't have a second late pay.
Can't have a second late payment in the sense of the first, and this, this is the discussion that we had. The first, if they're late the first time, a late fee is given or provided along with the court fee. The second time around, a late fee is given and the court fee, and that will determine after the court fee the second time, if these individuals will be evicted.
What's the grace period on late?
Grace period, actually 30 days.
So they automatically get a court fee? You said late fee and court fee?
Late fee and court fee.
For miss, for being late on a payment, they get a court fee?
They get a late fee and court fee.
Papers are taken to the court for being late.
I've never known that to be the process. Yes.
Is that after the 30 days?
After the 30 days, yes.
Ah, after 30 days.
Well, yeah, they have to go file something for to get a court.
So all right. If somebody's late, take January, past 30 days, they pay it off. And then in June, they're 20 days late. Is it another late, is it another late fee or not?
Not, not another late.
Okay, has to be another full 30 days.
Yes, sir. And that's the, that is the HUD regulation. And it's the verbiage from working with Bart Lewis, our senior consultant for National Facility Consultants Incorporated. Of course, he's been working with us, with the Housing Department for several years. Also, under the admissions and continued occupancy plan, the flat rate schedule updated flat rate rents based on 80% of the current fair market rents for Stanley County over income tenants added section to ACOB about the process for evicting tenants whose earned income is over the limit for Stanley County. And lastly, the pet policy, revised the section of the pet policy regarding assistance for animals to coincide with HUD requirements.
The flat rent, is that what we've been changing every year for the last several years to bring us up to it? It's just been gradual.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Also, when we take a look at the administrative plan changes for public housing and section eight, the lease will read pretty much the same for both of those areas. For administrative changes for public housing, the waiting list added that current residents of public housing programs must have no late rent payments for the previous 12 months. And that's for the waiting list to be considered to come into public housing as well as section eight. Also.
What kind of late payments? If they're on our list, what, what are you talking about?
Late payments as far as looking back over their payment history for any rent, if they live in other housing organizations or agencies.
Now, just by definition, earlier you said late would be considered past 30 days, correct?
Right.
So if they late 10 days, is that not considered late?
Yet, that is considered when we're talking about the waiting list, pulling people from the waiting list into public housing and section eight.
Dr. Scott, before you go any further, I know we said we've been gradually increasing the fair market rate over the years. I know the market rate right now for housing is, you know, high.
Yes.
You know, it's at its all-time high probably. What, what rate was we basing it on last year? And considering that we probably got an elevated rate overall.
Right. I was, from, from doing research, it was 30% of last year. We talked about, and I spoke with Bart, and Bart was trying to discover, was it 30% or 60%? There was some discrepancy between the two.
So we go on from, let's just use 60% as a number.
It is huge.
We're going from 60% to 80% during this day and time.
Right. Absolutely. And that's the discussion that we were having, a back and forth with HUD versus Bart Lewis to say why such a huge jump from 60% to 80%.
And that's mandatory.
Mandatory, yes, sir.
Wow.
That is, it's amazing. Well, that's, those are the discussions that we have been having over the last five months that I've been with you with housing about those particular percentages jumping that high over time. Also, for administrative plan changes, the revised, revised number two, the revised the time limit for criminal offenses from five years to three years. Next, added that the Department of Public Housing determined a family had willingly committed fraud in either eligibility of income requirements, family would be denied or terminated, and the DOF might proceed with legal action depending upon the severity of the fraud. Number four, added the denial of portables due to insufficient funding. Yes, ma'am. They, the, number three, added that the Department of Public Housing determined a family had willingly committed fraud in either eligibility of income requirements, family would be denied or terminated, and the Department of Public Housing may proceed with legal action depending upon the severity of the fraud. Number four, added the denial of portables due to insufficient funding, portables being individuals coming into public housing from other counties or section eight. Revised the number of dates where.
Go, hold on right there. If they come in from other counties, do they have the other county's money and just come in here to use it?
Not necessarily. When we're talking about, we're talking about vouchers for section eight.
Right. Vouchers for section eight.
Yes.
That can do, that can go from county to county.
Yes.
Public housing money not, right?
Public housing not.
Well, so that, whenever you just said the portables is, are we talking there under subset, on number four? Are we talking section eight or are we talking public housing?
Oh, I'm sorry. This, this is a section, this is a public housing piece here.
Okay, so.
Yeah, public housing.
So that won't go county to county. That's what I thought.
That, that information is also in the section eight plan, though.
Right. As well as in the section eight plan.
Okay, got you. I see that now, number four there too. But I didn't think, I guess my question was, is I didn't realize that, I knew section eight could go, followed the person. They could go wherever.
Right.
But I didn't realize that public housing was that.
Right. There, there is that debate again that we've had with HUD. Again, that you can go from county to county with public housing.
See, and I never, I never thought that was a.
I've never heard that.
I never heard that. I thought it was always section eight and never, that public housing was.
So are we committed to give them an apartment if it's open? Or is it still our choice?
It is still our choice right now. Right now, it is still our choice. And those are the things that we understood that HUD has told us that there's going to be lots of time for training because the regulations are changing overnight. And so therefore, we'll be doing lots of training in public housing to keep abreast of the regulations. As far as dwelling leases, dwelling lease changes, added eviction for second late payment of rent within current lease term and included the term non-refundable under section 10.3, which refers to the pet deposit, deposit of $150. And those are, those are actually the major changes that we're looking in for section eight, the lease, as well as public housing.
So when?
Right.
So these new guidelines HUD just, just recently sent, sent out and making it a mandate?
No, actually, these guidelines were notified, these notifications of guidelines were last year. These were certain information pieces coming out last year, and they are being implemented this year because of family self-sufficiency. Those are major areas where housing authorities are moving towards.
Okay, question, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So you've got a narrative, two-page narrative, and then there's about a 20-page on one side document that's got the money in it. That particular document, Mayor, hold on a minute. Mayor, is this what came to us at the last minute?
Hang on, hang on one second. Ms. Burke, Ms. Burke, are you, any comments on any of these, the two-page document?
So the only comment that I would add is I would recommend further clarification of what late payments mean. Can you hear me?
No.
I do. I would just recommend further clarification on what late payments mean. I think I heard a couple of definitions here. So if we could just define that in the policy, I think that'll be great for transparency with the tenants up front.
So if counsel approves this, it may be tomorrow night or whenever. They need to send it to you for review before I sign off on the certification forms.
So as long as it's what we discuss, I wouldn't have to review it again, but I'm happy to do that for Dr. Scott if he wishes.
Well, I, I think if it's just we're reviewing all contracts, you need to review that also.
Will do.
And I guess the second thing I was going to say is that the, the chart that's got the numbers on it, okay? If you look at the top right-hand corner, it's got a date of 2/28/22. Normally, when you get stuff from the federal government, when it's got a date on it somewhere, that might have been when it was first implemented or something. Because if you look at the very bottom, this looks like a HUD document that probably was updated on 4/08. So it appears that that would say to me that something has been started back as far as 2/28/22 that we, the reason that we have this.
If we go through this page by page, Mr. Scott, administrative salaries. I guess in all my capital fund stuff, you couldn't do it. They're going, they're going to allow you to pay salaries out of capital funds?
They will, yes.
See, I never thought.
How do, what does it require us to do locally?
As far as I.
I hate to hit, I don't know if Kimber's back there or not, because we have to meet our capital policies also.
Right. And, and that's the debate between the city and what, what HUD is asking or requesting, how are we going to pay salaries out of capital funds? That's, that's still in debate.
Well, I don't know how to answer that either.
I don't either.
Kimber, come on up here. Come on up here.
Hey, we were under the understanding that you could not pay salaries from capital funds.
Get as close as you can to that mic.
Hey, we were under the understanding that you could not pay salaries from capital funds. And that comes from.
So if HUD is allowing it, how are we going to make that come into our policies compliant with the state?
That's, that's what I don't know, because we're, we were under the understanding that HUD does not allow it with capital funding, is what I'm saying. Not with our capital funding, but that HUD does not allow it.
And in the past, I thought the capital was only for capital projects. I mean.
That's the reason I'm asking.
Only, and she can speak more to this, but only for capital projects within conventional, nothing to do with section eight. Like, training cannot be done with section eight, nothing. It has to be solely for conventional.
That's what I thought.
And if HUD is changing this.
We, we need, we need it.
What I'd like to see, if HUD has changed it, I'd like to see the paperwork from HUD stating where they have changed it on paper from HUD. stating where they have changed it on paper from HUD.
And how they're telling us to do this.
Correct. I don't, I don't feel comfortable with saying yes to something if I don't have the paper from HUD in front of me, signed from them stating that this is it, because, you know, that's an auditing thing, and I don't want to be caught doing something against what HUD's regulated to do. I mean, if there's, if there's ordinances out there on HUD's website that we need to pull down, or if they can show us the direction where these are stated at, where we can pay salaries from that, that would be great. I'd like to see that before it's okay.
Right, and definitely what I'll do is make sure that that is the case. If that is, if that's the case, if we can pay salaries from there, I'll certainly make sure that that is something we pull down from HUD and get information from our field office in Greensburg, make sure that that's something that is regulated, of course, by, by HUD policy.
If you can do that.
I will.
Sort of early tomorrow.
Yeah.
Then maybe, maybe Kimber can reach out to, and maybe the treasurer's office or our auditor or somebody, find out how we do that.
I'm going to have to do both, because I've never heard of salaries being paid out of capital funding, just regular capital funding. I mean, I'm, I'm, I haven't been at all.
I think we'll make sure we do it right and legally.
Correct, so I will reach out to both, actually, and possibly even the school of government.
So what we have in front of us is a five-year plan, because it's got different years on there, with, and so, based on what we have got in front of us and don't understand, don't have any information, should we just hold off on this until tomorrow?
Yes, well. I would, I would like to hear a few comments on the rest of it before, and then we talk about tomorrow night.
Nope.
Now, you're saying in this, in 2022, you've got the funds to redo the sewer in twenty apartments?
Yes.
And that will include the walls and, and under the floor and everything?
That will include everything, yes.
Includes some cabinets and things like that that need to come out and access, yes.
All of the above, yes. Cabinetry, all, any, any types of pipes that may run straight to the sewer lines from the kitchen, from bathrooms, et cetera.
You made a comment to me that HUD had give you, I think it was seven hundred and forty-two thousand, something like that. Is that in addition to these?
No, that, that's for this fiscal year, starting fiscal year.
Because that's just in this fiscal year?
Yes, this fiscal year, yes.
Seven twenty-four.
It doesn't level out till year four sixty-five.
And for the sewer, you said architects supposed to have the deeds to use by?
By the twenty-eighth of, the twenty-eighth of June.
Okay.
Yes.
And it's just these twenty, twenty apartments that have got the sewage problems?
Yes, twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Uh-huh.
Actually, in year twenty-two. You're doing twenty, though, every year, it looks like to me.
Supposedly.
In this five-year plan.
Supposedly twenty, should have been done.
And it stands to reason, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Scott, I mean, it stands to reason for having problems that are showing themselves in twenty, with everything being constructed at the same time, you know, we want to do the twenty that have issues now and move on a future year, do twenty more, twenty more before their problems start showing themselves, that we, at some point, get ahead of where the problems are.
Right.
Because if we don't, they will show up.
But like I have said before in the past, guys, I don't, in my years past, I never remember sewage being brought up as a problem, okay? When we have talked about, and that was a shock to me, that that was an issue out there. I never remember that as a capital name. But I'm not doubting that it is, it isn't, but I've never heard that before, and that blows my mind if it's as bad as it is.
You're talking about upgrading cable boxes, is that the inside or outside?
Outside.
And those are not Spectrum's cable boxes?
Those are Spectrum's cable boxes, but they, they actually said that they were going to charge us to take them off. And that's, that was the correspondence that we were having with them right before the REAC inspection, and so we're back and forth with them.
So they won't, forty-two thousand dollars to replace their box?
Yes, sir.
So if we move forward with the recommendation into AWPA, AWPA spending, you know, for free Wi-Fi in public housing, how would that come into play? That's just something to think about.
Yeah, I don't know how to answer that.
But we still got them blocked, so it's coming.
Come get your boxes, we don't want them back there.
Well, we don't pay for the cable, the clients pay for it, correct?
The clients pay for the cable, yes.
Counsel, any more questions for him tonight? If not, we will let him get that information and try to get with finance tomorrow morning so we can have something back tomorrow night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else got any questions? Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Thank you.
Say that again? Yes, ma'am, he does. Kevin, I think you've got a new employee to introduce.
That's a happy moment. After tonight, he might decide he don't want to be here.
I, I told him I wouldn't make him stay this late normally, but Mayor, members of council, this is Charles Donovan. Charles is a graduate of Western Carolina, and he worked for about four years with the Natural Resources Council.
Soil and Water.
Soil and Water, yeah, and from Norwood, right? Yeah, originally Albemarle native, and know several of you, and glad to be a part of, be a part of the city of Albemarle, so.
Well.
Welcome home.
Welcome, welcome home.
Thank you.
We'll keep you busy.
That sounds good. Charles is going to be replacing Jay as the Development Coordination Specialist, and kind of bringing him up to speed right now, and he'll be tackling all these developments as they come in.
Good deal.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right. I know we're running kind of late and got a closed session, but I'm going to run around the table anyway, Mr. Aldrich.
Bringing that up, Your Honor, it is a quarter to ten. Do we have, is there anything timely tonight? Can we put the closed session off for tomorrow night's meeting? I just don't want to be until midnight.
I have no problem with it. Rich, you plan to be here tomorrow night?
Yeah, I'll be here. I would just remind council that we would need to have two separate sessions, so the special session that's already been advertised for needs happen first, and we will close that meeting only to open up a new one to continue business items from tonight in a separate recess.
Since we have staff here and everything.
Anything else? Miss Hughes?
No, sir.
Two, two quick comments. I know we, we as a council, we approved the ordinances and stuff, and then the ordinances that we approved, sometimes our staff get put in some awkward, awkward situations, and I just want to say, just observing some encounters tonight, I appreciate our staff, such as Kevin Robertson.
Yes.
You know, I think a lot of times, especially in that department alone, you know, they get put in some odd situations more so than any others, you know? And I do appreciate that, you know, because they trying to enforce the policies that we as a council adopt. And the only other comment that I'll add, I know we approved the budget tonight, going forward, me personally, just speaking for me personally, I would hope that we somewhat probably go back to our old process of, during the budget, of meeting with the department heads, let them, let them come in, give they twenty or thirty-minute presentation to the council, and then come back to the table. I think the dots, the dot process that we've been doing is good for change every now and then, but I think with some of the things that we got at the forefront as a city, we need to hear from every department head, they, they wish list, then get the city managers' recommended items, and then hash everything out before we get to a point like we did this year. That's it.
Mr. Ferris?
Nothing to add.
A couple of things, and I'll add on to echo what Dexter just said about our department heads getting put in positions. I mean, Ross got put in one tonight, too, guys, about Stormwater, so, you know, we've got to stand and keep going, so, thank you there. I don't know if y'all went by the, by Whiscasset Park, was it Whiscasset? That's what we call it, isn't it? The park on, okay, on fifty-two. Yeah, last week, I don't know if y'all were by there, but we had a baseball tournament there last week that went for Lisa six.
You're talking about Montgomery.
Montgomery Avenue, there we go, golly, I was like.
Don Montgomery Park.
I'm sort, I'm worn out. That, there was a, there was a baseball tournament that brought in people day and afternoon and night for nearly a week over there, and attaboy, I understand that, Pierre, I understand we had some retired, not retired, some, some off-duty firefighters over there, because it was hot last week, and those guys, and I just appreciate that so much, that we had folks, I mean, Parks and Recreation did one heck of a job there last week, and good, good stuff going. Friday afternoon, we had a, something come through, and some people didn't have power for a while, some trees got uprooted that people didn't even realize would ever come out of the ground. I had pictures today from a person that, a house owned Yadkin, where, when it happened, again, the fire department was there and utilities was there, and probably somebody from Public Works was there Friday, Saturday, over there today. They are sending, this particular person is sending a letter to the editor just saying that we were jockeying on the spot, so thank you all for being there. Every department, when stuff like that kicks in, every department has to kick in. We do meet again before this, but would like for folks to realize and know that Toby's here for the newspaper, that the history, the History Center is having a Smithsonian event, they're having a, for a whole year, they're going to have Smithsonian, that's what's going to go over at the History Center, but the night of August the sixth, which is a Saturday, they're doing a big truck day and a big event downtown, and that's going to be their kickoff. They asked today that I remind folks about that. And last thing is, is that when we're looking at things to come in the near future, guys, I really do want us to talk, sit down with retail strategies again for downtown, as well as retail strategies overall, to tell us where they're, what's going on and where we need to be. So if we can put that on there, get them to come talk to us at some point, I would appreciate it.
The only thing I have is I'll just let council know that Wednesday morning, the Catalyst Grant Committee hopefully is going to meet.
Good.
And try, I'm hoping we'll come out of there with some grants awarded. At about, we have ninety thousand in the fund, and the request, I totaled them off my head, probably over about three hundred and forty thousand.
Oh, my.
So, you know, it's not going to nearly cover them all. Anyway, I've, I've asked the committee, as far as I know, the whole committee is going to be there, all seven of us, and I've asked them to rank each applicant in priority one to eleven, we have eleven requests, and so we'll have a starting point. Just go in there without that, I don't know where we, where we'd start. So I just wanted to let you know, and I'll give you an update at the next meeting, hopefully.
Mr. Dry?
No, sir.
I'll entertain, entertain a motion that we recess until tomorrow night after our special meeting.
I move.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.